Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Festerson is absent. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Gray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me just be brief, this is sort of an editorial comment if you will. I've been listening this past weekend and this week to all of the Victory All in Washington DC telling people about going back to where they came from and all of that kind of foolishness and childish behavior that continues to exist at the federal level. And as I looked at those things, it reminded me of my history that reminds us all that every great society that was destroyed or run over was taken apart from the inside before it was taken apart from the outside. And it reminded me of a quote by Dr. Martin Luther King that says, "Either we will learn to live together as brothers and sisters, or we will perish together as fools."
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in a white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. We thank you for joining us today. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we ask you to please turn off or silence your phones at this time. We have a special welcome announcement by Councilmember Melton.
Mr. President, well, I would just like to welcome Kate Kelly. Can you stand up, Kate? Kate has, actually Kate started her morning by attending a NECA board meeting with her father, Tom Kelly, and then she came over and has spent the afternoon with myself. We went around and visited the courthouse and then we did a little lunch with the mayor. And now she's sitting through this council meeting. She's already reviewed our agenda before today and has paid attention to some of the important votes we have. So I've gotten a little advice from Kate. And she's going to be in eighth grade at Christ the King and is very interested in becoming a future city leader. I don't like to call it politics, especially after what you said. Let's talk about leadership positions. So Kate, welcome to the city council.
All right. Nice. Madam Clerk.
Item six to eight can be considered together for Christian Acres located at 12424 North Sixtieth Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for Christian Acres with a waiver to Section 5399 sidewalks. Item seven, a resolution to approve the final plat for Christian Acres. Item eight, a resolution to approve a special use permit to allow development in the ED North Hills Environmental Resources overlay district.
The public hearings on items six through eight begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Afternoon, my name is Steve Kramer. I'm the property owner.
Address, please.
12424 North Sixtieth Street.
Thank you. You're here to answer any questions should there be any?
Yep.
Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through eight are approved, six to zero.
One public hearing will be held for items nine to 21 and some items will be considered together for Avenue One located southeast of 192nd Street. Items nine to 12, ordinances to rezone this property from AG District to DR District and MU District. Item 13, a resolution to approve a revised preliminary plat for Avenue One. Items 14 and 15, resolutions to approve the final plats for Avenue One. Items 16 and 17, resolutions to approve the subdivision agreements for Avenue One. Item 18, an ordinance to approve a mixed-use district development agreement for Avenue One. Item 19, an ordinance to annex the area located southeast of 192nd Street and West Dodge Road. A's Amendment of the Hole requested by the Law Department. Item 20, an ordinance providing for the designation of an enhanced employment area for Avenue One. And item 21, an ordinance approving a development agreement for occupation tax in an enhanced employment area for this project.
The public hearing on items nine through 21 begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Mr. President, Councilmembers Jim Bujer of Panzing Hogan, 10250 Regency Circle, Attorney for Avenue One. I have here today with me several members of our development team. Kurt Hofer, who's the owner with Jasper Stone Partners. I have Aaron Mesmer with Block Development, who's the lead development consultant for the project. Brian Shealy of Olson, who's the lead civil engineer on the project. And Jessica Thomas of Panzing Hogan, attorney for the developer as well. So Avenue One, while I'm stating the obvious today, is a very significant milestone for our project Avenue One. It's located at 192nd and Dodge. Before I begin my presentation though, I think it's important that I recognize a few of the non-Avenue One team members that have made significant contributions and have allowed Avenue One to bring this project of great significance to the city today at this public hearing. Those contributions include time, ideas, sometimes patience, and certainly diligence. As I discuss some of the challenges the project has faced, I think it will give some additional perspective on the collaborative effort that was required to get here. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Stothard and his staff, including Troy Anderson and Kevin Anderson. Troy and Kevin joined the project midstream, but quickly caught up and have been great assistants in coordinating some of the city efforts that we've had to bring us here today. We'd like to thank Dave Fanslaw and Eric England and the City Planning Departments for their efforts in creativity and solving challenges along the way, and there's been many. We thank Public Works Department, including Bob Stube and certainly Ryan Haas, who helped to solve many challenging traffic and public infrastructure issues. Ryan's an invaluable asset to the city and his thoughtful, patient, and skilled approach in working through public infrastructure challenges is of great value to the city and the development community. Really appreciate Ryan's efforts on all of our projects. We thank the Law Department, including Paul Kratz and Jennifer Taylor, and also Steve Curtis of the Finance Department for their assistance in working through some unique and challenging legal and financial hurdles that have allowed us to bring this project here today. There are quite a few issues at first impression that we have had to deal with to assemble the pieces of the puzzle, and they were quite helpful in this process. We thank Brooke Bench in the Parks Department and Steve Jansen, former planning director, for their thoughts and contributions to the project. While not at the meeting today, we thank representatives of the Governor's Office, the Nebraska Department of Transportation, and Douglas County for their assistance in solving some significant street infrastructure challenges associated with this project. I ran into Franklin Thompson today at the pre-council meeting and he was very involved in the project in its first phases, and I'm going to talk about Gateway Park. And so he's well aware of everything that we've been through. We'd like to thank also the representatives of the Fire Ridge and Grove neighborhoods that surround the project for their thoughtful input and their consideration supporting our project. Finally, we thank R&amp;R Realty, whose projects Fountain Ridge West and Fountain Ridge East are before the council today and are jointly developing the public infrastructure for this project. And finally, Ben Fogel. Ben has been a leader of the Avenue One team and is unable to join us today. And he and Mike Home of R&amp;R Realty have devoted countless hours to our collaborative efforts with R&amp;R. Without their skills and dedication, we would not be here today. And city council members, thank you for your consideration today and your patience in waiting for this project to come before the council. So with that being said, my next slide. Avenue One Final Plats Emission. So we're here today to ask the council to consider and approve the revised preliminary plat for Avenue One, the final plat, and rezoning for Phase One, lots one through eight on the east side of 192nd Street, and lots nine through 11 on the west side of 192nd Street. We have subdivision agreements for both the east and west projects, a mixed-use agreement, an annexation of the Avenue One area outside of the current city boundaries, the enhanced employment area, EEA designation of boundaries, and finally, the EEA agreement. We collectively take up 12 items on the agenda today. Thank you, Eliza, for that. As I previously mentioned, the Fountain Ridge and Fountain East, Fountain Ridge East and Fountain Ridge West projects that are being developed by R&amp;R out of Des Moines are before the council today. Larry Jovan will be presenting on these projects, which join and share significant public infrastructure with the Avenue One project. So where have we been? Our project history. Gateway Park. So five and a half years ago, I stood before the council and we secured a preliminary plat for a project called Gateway Park. The council approved the project, but following the approval of the project, our engineers and our development team got together and found out that there were two major problems that were hurdles, that were barriers to being able to proceed with the project. And these had to do with the public infrastructure along 192nd Street and at the interchange of West Dodge Road and 192nd Street. So the 192nd and West Dodge interchange, which was and currently as it exists today, is designed as a rural, as opposed to an urban interchange. As constructed today, the interchange would not support significant development, including our Gateway Park project. The second challenge was the reconstruction and lane expansion of 192nd Street. As our city continues to grow, many of you have seen how sometimes the lane expansion of arterial streets has lagged development. The city has been very proactive in our project in addressing the future traffic demands associated with the arterial street. And in part due to the Avenue One and Fountain East and Fountain West projects has required concurrent lane expansion from a two-lane to a six-lane section, essentially complete rebuild of 192nd Street. Avenue One. So this was the birth of Avenue One. Kurt went back to the drawing board and as part of his reconsideration, a multiple-pronged plan of attack was developed. First of all, Kurt hired Block Development and HOK Architecture as consultants, as each have substantial experience in developing dense, mixed-use projects in suburban areas that have modern, urban, active, live, work, play characteristics. Second, discussions were initiated with the state of Nebraska and the city of Omaha to address the interchange deficiency. Third, Fountain East and Fountain West were engaged to collaborate in the design and construction of public infrastructure that would serve both projects and future development in the corridor. And fourth, efforts continued with the surrounding residential neighborhoods, principally Fire Ridge and the Grove, with whom we developed a good relationship during the Gateway Park project and to assist us in their thoughts in our future development. One additional challenge that Kurt encountered, in which posed a significant hurdle for Avenue One, was the limited availability of a traditional public financing mechanism such as an SID or TIF to support the project. SIDs have traditionally been used by and are an effective developer tool in greenfield developments in Douglas and Sarpy County. In our project, however, 40 acres, or approximately one-fourth of the Avenue One project development, was not SID eligible due to the city's prior annexation and thus could not be used to support the public infrastructure. Second, the massive day-one infrastructure costs in rebuilding and expanding the interchange in 192nd Street and constructing the public infrastructure for the east and west backbones simply were not financeable through the traditional SID. So over the last five and a half years, with extreme ingenuity, teamwork, not to mention significant capital outlays with consultants, Kurt was able to find viable solutions. The first of the solutions, which is a very large one, is the Interchange Capital Improvement Program. The state legislature adopted the Build Nebraska Act and through significant work with the Governor's Office and with the NDOT in the state of Nebraska, a commitment of $16,856,000 has been designated by the state for the interchange reconstruction. This commitment is memorialized in the municipality preliminary financial agreement between the state of Nebraska and the city, which this council approved on April 23, 2019. The interchange project is slated for 2025 construction. The Build Nebraska Act began project selections in 2015 and the first round selections continued through September of 2016, during which the NDOT engaged more than 2,000 stakeholders to update and expand its project prioritization process. Project selections under the Build Nebraska Act are based on engineering and economic factors. In the state's selection process, the state ranked the Avenue One project as one of the top three developments in the state to generate an immediate economic impact. Avenue One was the catalyst for satisfying the economic development benefit and engineering performance factors and solidified the state's commitment for this $16.8 million. Second, the joint infrastructure cost-sharing agreements. As I mentioned, Kurt went to work with the Fountain East and Fountain West projects to share in the cost of reconstruction of 192nd Street and for the public backbone infrastructure for the east and west sides of 192nd Street. As you might be able to tell from our drawing up here on the board, the Avenue One project is generally in the areas that are outlined in orange and the Fountain East and Fountain West projects are on the east and west side of 192nd Street, in the blank areas shown on the map. Some of the public infrastructure cooperation that was engaged in this project include 192nd Street, include the backbone, street, and sewer, and utility infrastructure on both the east and west sides. In addition, as Avenue One is sort of situated in the center of development that is not only going on from the intersection on the north side, but also on the south, several other projects that are currently ongoing in the south have participated in the sharing in separate cost-sharing agreements for roadway, detention ponds, and park infrastructure. Third, Avenue One Master Plan and EEA. I know the council is quite familiar with and understands how the EEA works, but I find it important and beneficial to go back to the EEA statute to understand the legislature's intent for granting cities the authority to create EEA districts. The state pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 18-214204 authorizes municipalities to utilize enhanced employment areas to promote economic development. Omaha approved the use of the EEA on April 25, 2017, and subsequently approved the Capital District as the first EEA project. The EEA statute recognizes the use of EEA districts in both blighted and non-blighted areas. The requirement for allowing an enhanced employment area in non-blighted areas for Douglas County is a determination by the governing body that the project within the proposed boundaries of the enhanced employment area will bring at least 30 new employees and an investment of at least $3 million. The enhanced employment area designation is clearly intended to provide a mechanism to enhance economic development where other tools might not be available. The EEA was the final piece of the puzzle for Avenue One. But for the EEA, our project could not proceed. The EEA not only allows for the project to proceed, but it also provides significant benefits to the city. On day one, the city realizes the benefit of sales tax and ad valorem real estate tax revenue due to the fact that EEA districts are only allowed within the city limits. Pursuant to Avenue One's EEA application, Avenue One has projected that the city will drive approximately $75 million in city tax revenues from 2022 through 2041. The legislature in creating and enacting the enhanced employment area statute recognized that there were instances that development tools in place, SIDs, TIF, et cetera, would not allow for and not be enough for certain projects to proceed. The use of an SID was not a viable solution for Avenue One because, as I'll remind you, 40 acres of the Avenue One project is already within the city limits and that's not SID eligible. And two, there's in excess of $29 million of public improvements constructed in the first phase of the development. This upfront infrastructure will benefit later phases of the development, but there's not a mechanism built into the SID statutes that would allow the development to finance this debt through the SID and then pay it off through future phases of the development. The enhanced employment area is the only tool that Avenue One project is able to utilize that can bridge that funding gap. But for the use of the EEA, the Avenue One project would not occur. Furthermore, and as previously mentioned, the density and total build valuation of Avenue One was a catalyst for the agreement of the state of Nebraska to fund 192nd and West Dodge Interchange Project. So I want to come full circle back to the intent of the enhanced employment areas, which is to provide a resource to developers to build projects which will bring employees and new investment into cities. At the completion of the Avenue One project, it's anticipated that nearly 6,500 individuals on a full and part-time basis will be employed within the Avenue One development. Avenue One is expected to create 7,500 construction jobs with a total capital investment in excess of $1.2 billion. These employment and investment levels clearly exceed the statutory requirement of 30 employees and an investment of $3 million. We thank and appreciate the council for its support of this dynamic project on the Western Gateway to Omaha. The Avenue One team will be happy to address any questions that the council may have regarding the Avenue One project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bujer. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Mr. Anderson.
Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham Street. On behalf of the Mayor's Office, we recommend approval of the project. As you can see, this is going to be an incredible project to continue to grow the city of Omaha. This project and the EEA application was also evaluated by the committee and subsequently recommended approval as well. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard? Any opponents wishing to be heard? We'll close the public hearing. Councilmembers? Mr. Harding.
Procedurally, I think it was stated at the beginning, but I just wanted to confirm it. So the first action, if any, would be on nine, nine through 18?
That's correct.
Is that correct? And then we'll take 19, 20, and 21 separately?
Yes, and there'll only be a vote on 21 if 20 is approved.
Right, okay. I'll move to approve nine through 18.
Roll call.
Melton. Pauls. Palermo. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine through 18 are approved, six to zero.
I guess I'll keep going. So I'll move to approve 19, which is the annexation.
And there's an amendment of the whole with that.
Oh, I'm sorry, with the amendment of the whole.
Is that the second? Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls. Palermo. Gray. Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
And then on 20, and I'll just make a quick comment on this too, is that I reached, when I first became aware of this project and the concept of using the EEA instead of what's commonly or typically used for suburban development with a sanitary and improvement district, I ran this through a couple of groups that are typically concerned about raising taxes and also working with Director Curtis and those groups. And because of the analysis that was done and the benefit that comes to the city immediately, rather than waiting through a process of years before annexation occurs, that the benefit to the city would actually be, it would be more in favor of the city using this vehicle. So having said that, I'll move to approve item number 20.
Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, sometimes I can remember going over this discussion when I was in the legislature and little did I realize that someday I may be involved in this kind of stuff, which we have several. What I thought was interesting after reading through this with Troy Anderson, a comment that he made, this was a unique request to become part of the city. Normally people, not normally, but lots of times people fight us to annex. And another thing, he said that one part of the document, it said $375 million future projected value, but Mr. Anderson said over a billion dollars, which is relatively unique. One of the major arguments I've had with this in the past, that we don't create islands within the city. And this to me is creating a little bit of an island, but I do see the potential for this. But I also believe that we need to be very, for those people who know me, I want to make it as transparent as possible because so many times I hear people say, "I don't believe in raising taxes." And I personally think we raise taxes almost all the time. Almost on everything we vote, we do raise taxes. I truly believe that. Because we'll use the idea, "Well, we're going to let this bond go down so we can add another one, but I'm not raising taxes because it'd be the same." Well, to me, you're raising taxes because if the bond would go away, you wouldn't have those taxes to pay. But I do know you need that for development. So that's an argument that I see some wrongdoing in. But here's the thing that I want to make sure people understand. In this enhanced hotel business, you will be charged 1.75% gross on the hotel revenues, 1.75 on beverages and restaurants, 1.75 on grocery retails. I understand that's why we have this, and 55 cents per square foot additional taxes. So we are causing some things to increase in this area, but if you look at the overall picture, it's probably pretty hard to argue that this does not meet the needs of the city. I am curious, I asked somebody from planning on this. When we approve this, and I'm assuming we are today, to be honest with you, because I'm not speaking against it, will this allow other developers in other parts of the city going west to use the same concept?
Yeah, Dave Fanslaw, City Planning, it wouldn't surely prohibit them from doing it if they choose to.
Right. But apparently this is a strong option for this development. So I'm assuming that if I were out there looking and I had other pieces of land, that I would come in front of the city if I'm not in an SID or I don't qualify for TIF. This seems a logical approach.
Well, yeah, it's surely one tool that can be used.
Okay. Now, and I see this is a $40 million, that's the maximum dollars in this pocket of money, 40 million? Is that what they're asking, I'm assuming?
Yeah, I believe so, yes.
Okay. What is the timeframe? I know when they do TIF, it's like 15 years and law, is this, I think I asked you earlier.
Yeah, Paul Kratz, Attorney. This, I believe, is 20 years.
Okay. Okay. So we know within 20 years whether this is, okay. Again, I do see merit in it, but I cannot say that by voting for this, that I do not raise taxes. I can't say that. But I own it because I think it's for the betterment of the city. I think so many times we get so proud of ourselves of saying, "I'm against this, this, and this," just like we did a few days ago when we decided we needed a center over here, a detention center. We needed to spend the money to have it. Do you want to do it? Not necessarily. So again, I support this. I think it's a unique idea. So I do commend the people who've come up with this process. Thank you.
Councilmember Melton.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, this is the first project that I will actually support that I will actually support this because as I've stated before, I believe when the legislature passed this, it was intended for projects that did not qualify for tax increment financing. I don't like to see projects that use both. But the amount of infrastructure that we But the amount of infrastructure that we are getting from this project and all of the, all of the money is going to go towards infrastructure. This isn't being used for marketing or any of the other things. It's forty million because I, if my notes are correct, two-hundred, there's two-hundred million dollars in actual public infrastructure investment in this project. And so, when you get that kind of investment that benefits the public, that benefits everybody, that, that to me is, is something that we can't really turn, turn our, our heads and say no to. In addition to the twenty million we're getting from the state, that I don't believe that the project, the interchange, would get done without this development, and the state wouldn't give us the money without it. Secondary, we're actually gonna annex and make the, make the land that's not in the city limits part of the city limits, so that actually benefits all the taxpayers in the city of Omaha, because we broaden our tax base. So, this may be a project that's happening out at one-hundred-ninety-second and Dodge, but by annexing this land immediately, it's gonna broaden our tax base, which will have more money that can be used all over the city. So, it actually does benefit somebody living at Fortieth and Dodge. So, with that, I, I would say that this is the, I think this is the kind of project that was anticipated by the legislature to utilize this kind of enhanced employment area tax. So, I'll be voting yes for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Boozer.
Mr. Boozer, one-zero-two-five-zero, Regency Circle.
In one of your slides, there was this, this little intriguing, dark speck that my eyes were not able to pick up on, over going from the west side of the project, looked like it was crossing West Dodge Expressway, and I was just wondering if that was meant to depict a bike pedestrian connection? Or, or my eyes just kinda wishing that that were there?
I think that is on all of our wish lists. So, on the, on the west side of the project, we're all hopeful that there's a, there's a, Lawrence Younglin Park is on the north side of Dodge, at the northwest, northwest of the intersection of one-hundred-ninety-second and Dodge. And it would be just a wonderful thing for our project, for the city, if there could be a pedestrian bridge that could cross West Dodge Road and connect into the, into the Avenue One project. The dollars haven't been identified to do that yet. We have, we do have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of our EA money designated to go towards the contribution towards that bridge, and I can tell you that the developer will do everything in its power to try and make that bridge happen. And it may take some efforts through some private dollars or public dollars, but it would be, it would be a great amenity for West Omaha if we could connect those areas. And as you know, Metropolitan Community College is just to the west of that, and to be able to connect the housing and, and some of the things in the office and some of the things that would be going on in Avenue One, it would just be a tremendous benefit to the city for pedestrian and biking and that type of thing, so.
In the interim, will the reconstruction of the interchange have a new bridge or a widened bridge for one-hundred-ninety-second?
So, what I can tell you about that is there are some preliminary designs. The, the engineering solution that has been on the table today, as I would understand it, is what's called a double diverging diamond, which is a unique traffic, and I do have Brian Shealy here, and he might be able to explain it better than I can, but it is a way, and I don't know whether there would be a new bridge that would be associated with that, but it would be a complete rebuild of that. It's a very substantial improvement project. But I can't say for sure that they've solved all the engineering with that yet, but that will begin here in the next couple of years, and the construction is slated for 2025.
But presumably, if they just incorporated the bike ped at one-hundred-forty-fourth when they redid that for the West Farm project, that it would be also at one-hundred-ninety-second?
Yeah, that would be, that would be nice as well, if that could be incorporated within that project.
All right, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Pauls.
One more question about the bridge, because I was intrigued when you first started talking this, you're developing. But I see you put a timeline of seven years. I don't understand, how does that fit in a promissory note?
I, I think maybe that actually, it was a city comment that, yeah, so I'm not sure that that came from us necessarily.
So, there's not a, a seven-year deadline?
I think that, that the, the funds get applied to some, another area, to streets, if it doesn't get used for the, for the connection, yeah.
And you'll have to have that bridge over a highway, and they'll probably, that will involve what, the state or the federal?
Yeah, the NDOT, so it's a, it's a, yeah, it's a federal highway, it's U.S. Highway Six, so yes, it's, there's a lot of red tape there to be able to bridge that gap, so to speak.
Probably need to say a prayer to when you're dealing with.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further lights, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty is approved, six to zero.
Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item twenty-one is approved, six to zero.
Nine through twenty-one have been approved, good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's hear from Fountain Ridge, shall we?
Items twenty-two to thirty-two can be considered together for Fountain Ridge East, located southeast of one-hundred-ninety-second Street and West Dodge Road, and Fountain Ridge West, located at two-forty South one-hundred-ninety-second Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. This is approvals for ordinances to rezone property from AG District to DR District and M.U.A. District, ordinances to approve mixed-use district development agreements, a resolution to approve a revised preliminary plat for Fountain Ridge West, resolutions to approve the final plats, and resolutions to approve subdivision agreement.
The public hearing on items twenty-two through thirty-two begin at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Members of the council, Larry Jobin, one-hundred-and-fourteen-forty, West Center Road, appearing on behalf of both applicants, one on the east and one on the west. And of course, we also appreciate the hard work that has been given towards this project and the Avenue One projects, and the R and R Fountain East, Fountain Ridge East and Fountain Ridge West projects have been so interwoven and intertwined, but I think we've been working on this project for about seven years. So, I think it went back to my earliest emails, and I think it was in two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. So, it's been a long time in the making. We, again, also appreciate the Mayor's Office and the various departments within the city, and again, a lot of challenges on this deal. We also appreciate the Avenue One team. Here at the end, we really kinda pulled it together and made this thing happen. So, with that, ours, two projects are pretty straightforward. It's two mixed-use developments, their office uses on both of them. We are also contributing to the public infrastructure of one-hundred-ninety-second Street as well as Burke Street and HWS Cleveland, and we've got agreements that have all been worked out regarding those items. With that, we are using a sanitary and improvement district. It just so happened that our project was financeable that way, just because of the timeframe in which we're coming out of the ground and our debt-to-value ratio that we look at when we're using an SID made sense, or the most sense for us to use that vehicle. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. And procedurally, it's one, one motion, one vote? We don't, you do them all at once? Oh, I'm sorry. Any other proponents? I was getting ahead of myself, too excited about this one. Mr. Anderson, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Excuse me again, Troy Anderson, Deputy Chief of Staff, Omaha Mayor's Office, eighteen-nineteen Farnham Street. And again, what an exciting project. Was really exciting to be part of, sort of the collaboration, and so, with that being said, couldn't be more excited to recommend approval and ask for your approval as well. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any other proponents wishing to be heard?
Good afternoon, City Council. My name is Juan Alvarado, thirty-sixty Titus Avenue, and I'm here, a proponent of this project, but I would like to ask a question in regards to the construction part of it. I know in a lot of these projects that were involved in TIF money, we had an incident on Forty-Ninth and Dodge Street that almost cost the life of two individuals that were classified as workers. As one stated earlier, there's seventy, there's a lot of construction jobs pending on these projects, and I would like to know how are they gonna ensure that they're, these construction workers are not misclassified and left alone when they get injured? If that's something that they can answer and properly classified as the state law says.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. I don't believe this is a TIF project, it's an SID project, and in matters of employee classification, would be within the parameters of the Nebraska Department of Labor. Is there a second? Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-two through thirty-two are approved, six to zero.
I said twenty-six.
Oh.
It's a separate motion, it's outside, twenty, approved twenty-seven through thirty-two.
Okay, sorry, I didn't catch it.
Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Twenty-seven through thirty-two are approved, six to zero.
Second.
Item thirty-three, a resolution to approve the forty-six and Dodge tax increment financing redevelopment project plan located at four-six-zero-nine Dodge Street in an amount up to six million five hundred thousand dollars.
The public hearing on item number thirty-three begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. Let's begin with getting oriented. Okay, the project's at forty-six and Dodge. It is an assembly of nine parcels. It involves the demolition of three single-family homes and some of the older commercial buildings along Dodge Street. The proposal is the construction of a new two-hundred-seventy-eight-unit apartment building. Project includes two-hundred-ninety-five parking stalls. We've got three levels of parking with five levels of apartment on top. This project is a fifty-two-point-seven-million-dollar investment. They're asking for six-point-five million in TIF support. This project complies with the TIF program. It's consistent with the city's master plan. It adds density, it's gonna help our transit system. We ask for your approval.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Mr. Bungar.
Good afternoon, Ken Bungar, one-eight-three-one-three Dewey Circle, in the Grove, I might add, next to the, very large, nice project that's just approved. I think Don covered it quite well. We've got a new development in the area, it's going to eight-story, it's gonna be an upscale multi-unit project. The majority of units will be the studios. We've talked with the neighbors, have had quite a bit of feedback and been working with them since last fall. The developer is Gary Hassan Flu from Kansas City. He's here to answer any questions, and our architect from Kansas City, John Waynick, is here and will make a brief presentation. So, with that, John or Gary?
Don't forget your name and address.
Good afternoon, John Waynick, Clockwork Architects, four-two-three Delaware Street, Suite one-oh-two, Kansas City, Missouri, six-four-one-oh-five. Don did a good job presenting, showed a couple of the high-quality renderings that we provided to the neighbors as well as the city. Eight-story apartment building, three-story parking structure with five stories of apartments on top, high-quality materials, we worked closely with Planning Department to really provide a product that they were happy with, with the density on Dodge Street to break up the mass. A lot of masonry, stucco glass, as well as a little bit of metal panel for accent. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents wishing to be heard?
How do you do, council? My name's Gary Hassan Flu, with MW and Garrison Companies, twenty-twenty Broadway, Kansas City, Missouri, six-four-one-oh-eight, and I'm the project developer. We have been working at this for seven months now, and working intimately with staff, who's done a fabulous job of guiding us through the process, and, and working with the neighbors to try to create a product that they could be proud of, that would look good, and we think we're here with this product. It's a, as was said by Ken, a, a, very much an upscale development. It's breaking ground in terms of its, both its, 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 its density and its location there on Dodge to create a lot more gentrification, further growth in that area. In turn, we're getting the benefit of its location next to University of Nebraska Medical Center. The jobs that exist in Midtown, and of course, the university jobs to the west at UNO. So, I think it's a great symbiotic development that stands to be a great asset to this city. I'm happy to address any other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Seaton, did you want to be heard?
Yeah.
Wrap things up.
Don Seaton, City Planning. Couple things I wanted to add that I forgot to mention. The, really should be commended, the developer and the architect, for the work they did in revising the design. They worked very, very closely with our city planning urban design team, and the design has really evolved quite substantially. They also should be commended for their job in reaching out to neighbors and the neighborhood association. I think they did a very nice job. Anyway, wanted to add that.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents?
Good morning, my name's Felicia Hilton, or good afternoon, my name's Felicia Hilton, with the North Central State's Regional Council of Carpenters, one-zero-seven-six-one, Virginia Plaza, here to speak as a proponent of the project, but with the caveat that the developer and those that are participating in all of these wonderful projects, make sure that the people that are actually building the project, the project laborers, are paid on the books, that they're not misclassified according to the state law of the Nebraska Misclassification Act, which goes to the enforcement of the Department of Labor, but also is required for the city to make sure that folks working on the project are actually being paid on the project. The city loses about twenty million dollars a year in tax fraud on construction projects because people aren't paying workers as employees, so they're not paying into workers' comp, they're not paying into unemployment, and they're not paying state taxes. And so, knowing that a lot of contractors do business legitimately in the state and in the city of Omaha by paying workers, paying on the books, it's very difficult for those contractors to compete for any project, whether it has public subsidy or not, when it's an unfair playing field and bids aren't being bid fairly because workers and the labor is being kept off the books, the real cost. And so, we just want to make sure that as we continue to build the great city of Omaha, that we do so encompassing that piece of making sure that the workers on these projects are being paid and that they are on the books. When they get injured, they're not on the taxpayers' dime for the costs of their injuries and recovery, that they are being covered under workers' comp like every other worker that is working in the state and in the city, and that we'd really like to see a lot more enforcement of the Misclassification Act in the state of Nebraska on these projects, which is specific to construction and service employees.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents wishing to be heard?
Larry Store, five-oh-one-five Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-three-two. I live not too far away from that particular area. I drive around that area and Saddle Creek Road quite often, and I'm dismayed at the disappearance of the Omaha skyline. But I'm also dismayed that people in just one block south of Forty-sixth and Dodge, for example, has some very nice older homes. If you take the bird's-eye view of that area, obviously, those homes are gonna disappear one of these days. Obviously, there's not enough roads, infrastructure to accommodate all these cars, for the one that's just about complete at Forty-Ninth and Dodge, now another one at Forty-sixth and Dodge, and how many in between there? On the south side of Dodge only, but at Forty-sixth and Dodge, just north a little bit, there's four more big ones. How many more between here and the university? Eventually, all the way to Fremont, maybe, because of the bus, the rapid transit to Fremont. But the people that are paying the taxes, it's not fair. It's not free and fair to them. A lot of those people are in those smaller, older homes. They're just one block south. A lot of those people are in those smaller, older homes, they're just one block south, there's a sign on Dodge Street that says Dodge Street to Douglas Street. Hurrah, hurrah, we're going to take those homes, maybe. You're going to drive them out because of the cars. Those people right now have a lot of problem driving their own street. They have a lot of problem with speeders, a lot of problem with noise and parties, and now you're going to build another one. I've talked to a few of those residents, but I'm not in president of homeowners association either. You need to stop some of this stuff and tell the people, give us a full diagram of how that's going to change the infrastructure of that whole area. Because you're not going to be able to trafficize Omaha for what's being built right now. There's too much traffic as it is. The apartments north of there are not filled yet, the apartments on Forty-ninth and Dodge are not filled yet. This is going to bring how many more, two to three hundred? They're not filled yet. So, if you follow things that are being said and done, we're already talking about expanding the street on Farnham because of two-way traffic and confusion over traffic rules on Farnham. That means that the people from Douglas to Farnham Street are probably going to lose some property. That means some people on the corner of Forty-ninth and south of Douglas are going to have a couple more big buildings there. So what are you going to do when that happens? When people are honking all day and all night because they can't get in their own driveway? Excuse me, you need to slow down on this. T I F financing? I don't care what anybody says, you're not explaining it well enough to people. That will increase the property taxes of the people that live there now. Because everybody else is getting a tax break on it. You're defraying somebody's expense from building and asking the people that live there on how to pay for it. That is part of a shell game, please stop.
Thank you, are there any other opponents?
Hello, counsel, Mark Mondrosik, five-five-five South Thirty-Fourth Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six-eight-one-zero-five. Mr. President, point of order, how long would I be allowed to speak if I wanted to speak at length today?
You'll have at the discretion of the chair the time you need to make your opposition.
Okay, thank you, sir, I'd like to give you all my word as an Eagle Scout that I will do my best to stick to the topic. I know, Mr. President, you're more strict about sticking to the topic than Mr. Gray was, but I have a few things to say about this project and there's a little more nuance to the conversation that is involved in just speaking about this one particular building. I want to first say that if ten people get up here and speak in opposition to this project, who are your constituents, then that's basically all the interaction that this council or any of these bureaucrats will have had with these communities in regards to this project. This corporation, I would like to say one positive thing about this corporation, and that is that the design that they've showed today seems to have changed from the original project that they first proposed, the first community meeting that they had that I attended, and the first building was quite honestly ugly. So thank you for changing the design, it's much better now. I'd like to say that this corporation had maybe two to three public meetings, I have no evidence to suggest they had a third public meeting in the neighborhood, but there's been maybe twenty-four hours total interaction between this government, these corporations, and the communities that they are interacting with and putting this development into, and that's completely unacceptable. The first meeting I went to, the community meeting at this development that happened, the gentleman, one of these gentlemen, I believe, wasn't there because he'd missed his flight, I'll forgive him for that. They had the use of a term at this meeting, they said it was upscale market rate. I don't see the word upscale in the proposal today. We've cloaked the meaning of these terms back down to market rate, and as I pointed out before, these terms are completely meaningless and created by developers to hide the fact that no one making the minimum wage in this city will be able to afford to live in this building, once it has been created. No one working two full-time jobs at minimum wage in this city will be able to afford to live in this building after a month's rent. I make fifteen dollars an hour at my job, and that's, that's a wage that people think is outrageous to suppose that we could pass as a minimum wage. And I, I will not be able to afford the cheapest studio-bedroom apartment in this building. This is gentrification, this is displacement. I want to talk about the actual building now. Part of the land that's being acquired is being used for a dog park. And part of the building will have a pool attached to it. These are amenities which are nice for the people who live there, but which create, as Councilman Pauls mentioned earlier, created an island within the city for people to have resources that are not available to the rest of the communities around them. When we talk about putting a pool in every single development that comes across here, that adds, that adds exponential cost to the cost of these buildings, and that increases the TIF funding that we have to put out. I'm not here really to complain about TIF, TIF is fine, I sort of like TIF, I think there should be more requirements about rent on TIF. But when we create these islands where we have dog parks for each of these buildings and pools for each of these buildings, it disincentivizes these people who live in these buildings to want to pay taxes for public pools, for public dog parks, for public infrastructure that we can all use, that I don't have to make thirty dollars an hour, six figures, and have an education to be able to live in the middle of this city, the city I grew up in, the neighborhood I grew up in. This is undoubtedly going to raise rents around this building. And I've only heard one of the people on this council ever refer to gentrification in a bad light. And I would, with as much respect as I can, Mr. President, you have referred to Park Avenue and other developments across this city with a positive light.
You're off-topic, Mr. Mondrosik.
I am not, Mr. President, with respect.
You're off, you're going to get on top.
You've spoken about.
Would you please escort him, you're out of order. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard?
Hi, my name's Alex O'Hanlon, I live at thirty-ten Lincoln Boulevard. I serve on two community building organizations in addition to serving as the president of the Saddle Creek Corridor Neighborhood Association, the neighborhood where this proposed development will be built. It's in this capacity today that I'm here to ask the city council to lay over a vote on this TIF application until the concerns of the neighborhood association have been addressed. We're not opposed to dense infill development in our neighborhood, rather, we're in favor of it. However, we have three major concerns that we would like to see addressed. There are parking and transportation, the inclusion of affordable units, and the inclusion of retail space. One, transportation. The TIF application for this development states that the scale and density of the project supports the city's plan to improve Dodge Street's role in city, in the city's public transportation system, and that it will increase the population density along a major transit corridor, which furthers efforts to promote transit-oriented development. However, this two-hundred-and-seventy-eight unit development is also slated to include two-hundred-and-ninety-five parking stalls. As Don mentioned, that's three levels of parking. This is not transportation-oriented development. A transportation-oriented development would encourage folks to use the new orbit route and bike and walk to work by allowing for low, lower parking minimums, as the future TOD guidelines will recommend. We originally requested that the planning department allow this development to have lower parking requirements in line with the anticipated TOD overlay for this area. I'm here today to iterate that request. I think we can all agree that it is imperative that the new orbit system be successful so that it can expand throughout the city. In order for the new route to be successful, it needs to meet its projected ridership of twenty-seven-hundred people a day. That's twice the amount of people that are riding this route today. If new developments are expected to help support the future transit routes, they need to be designed to support the future transit routes. If this building is going to be here for the next hundred-and-fifty years, which new building should be designed to do? Then it needs to be built for the future and not the past. Two, the inclusion of affordable units. Firstly, this would be a great spot for the inclusion of some affordable units precisely because it's on the location of a future orbit route. The TIF application claims that this development is in line with the city's master plan because a goal in the concept element of the master plan is to create healthy and diverse neighborhoods throughout the city. But the application also states that the redevelopment of this site will continue a pattern of new upscale residential opportunities in the neighborhood. I actually have, can I show you?
He'll turn that on for you, just if you lay it face up. There you go.
So, this map shows Midtown Omaha, I think we have the inner, the interstate towards the bottom. And then where my finger is, is like Fifty-second. So the red dots are recently developed, both renovated and new construction. Ninety percent of these developments have used TIF and all appear to promote luxury housing with rents that don't promote affordability. This development will include four-hundred-and-sixty-three square-foot studio apartments for nine-hundred-and-forty dollars a month and two-bedroom apartments for fifteen-hundred dollars a month. The average rent in Omaha right now is nine-hundred-and-four dollars a month, that's average, that means that's not the high end. So, suggesting that a developer that's requesting tax increment financing includes some affordable units in a development located in an increasingly less affordable neighborhood and on a major transportation route, no less, seems like it also falls in line with the master plan's overriding goal of creating a community committed to and promoting and maintaining a high quality of life for all its people. Three, including retail. I understand that there are certain risks to including commercial space in developments. However, the city of Omaha's webpage about transit-oriented development states that it should include mixed use and encourage economic development. So if one of the goals of this new building is to spur transportation-oriented development, it should be a mixed-use building. Additionally, retail would help this development to spur economic growth by providing space for economic transactions. Furthermore, retail space will help new residents to, to assimilate into the neighborhood by providing a space for them to interact with current residents, and it will provide an amenity for existing residents, which this development currently lacks. These concerns are not only of members of the neighborhood association, but additionally of neighbors across the city who have reached out and voiced similar concerns about developments in their area and the pattern of new developments throughout East Omaha. Across the city, there are concerns about rising rents, rising rents and substandard transportation routes. This development is the perfect opportunity for the city to demonstrate its commitment to a better future. So let's work together now and in the future to create an inclusive, vibrant, and beautiful city that we all want to live in. Thank you.
Thank you, are there any other opponents wishing to be heard?
Hello, my name is Dr. Goswami, I live at four-twenty-seven North Forty-first Street. I'm an internal medicine physician, I, that lives in town and trained at Creighton. I want to oppose the TIF funding for this building at Forty-sixth and Dodge as this building does not plan for an affordable nor diverse city. In addition, this, this building will not support transit-oriented development and will actually sabotage your city plan for an Omaha Rapid Bus Transit. So, I grew up in Chicago, outside of Chicago, went to school at Northwestern, I met my wife, who's from Omaha. I went to med school and then we decided to, and she got a master's in accounting. Came back to Omaha and did my training at Creighton. And I really want, I rode my bike every day to med school and I really wanted to ride my bike every day to residency. So we chose to live in Gifford Park neighborhood. During those three years of residency, we got to know the neighborhood and we got to enjoy the city engagement, or the community engagement of Friday night markets. They've got a community garden that's there, they have education for the refugees at Yates, free soccer on Wednesdays as well. And we love just being in a vibrant community, that was lots of diverse people from lots of different backgrounds, so not only cultures, but also socioeconomics. And as my residency came to an end, we had another decision, is we could go anywhere we wanted to in the U.S. and we decided we liked it here. And we wanted to stay here for these two things, mainly, Midtown, where I'm at, is walkable, bikeable for everything that I do, even now. And then the other thing is this inclusion of diversity. And so, we decided to stay. Since then, the original apartment that I lived at, Thirty-Fifth and Dodge, has turned into a luxury apartment. The residency that I was at, Creighton Hospital, has turned into a luxury apartment. And then you could see from the map that if your all goal is to, has been to increase housing stock and provide for the supply for young professionals that are looking for upscale housing, I think you've done it. Congratulations. This building, though, is another building that's the same as all the other ones in terms of you're building more density, but it's all for high-income earners. And so, I want to oppose this. One interesting thing is this map of Omaha that's on the screen right now. And so, it's from the University of Virginia, it's related to a two-thousand-and-ten census map. It actually relays race onto census, and so you can see from the dots, the blue color is Caucasian, the green color is black, the orange color is Hispanic. And so you'll see Omaha, like most other cities in the U.S., is segregated, so the west is mostly white, north Omaha is black, and south is Hispanic. So this is I eighty, seventy-five north. So this is slightly zoomed in. So again, this is seventy-five north Dodge Street, this is Seventy-second. So this is the area that I've been living in the whole time I've been here. You can see from this visual that this is the most multicolored area in the whole city. It's very diverse and vibrant for this reason, that there is a lot of diversity. The diversity is able to be there because there's affordable housing there right now. And if you all continue to build and subsidize, and then this subsidy is six million for a twelve-million-dollar project, which is, I don't know, you're subsidizing like half of this building, which is outrageous.
It's fifty million. Fifty million.
Fifty?
Yeah.
Okay.
Fifty-two.
Fifty percent.
Almost fifty-three million.
Fifty-three million is the total project? Okay, that makes more sense. Twelve percent, okay, that makes more sense. So, again, continuing to support and subsidize only high-income apartments is going to lead to a less diverse city and is going to lead to less interest in young professionals to lead to this, to move to the city. And Omaha Rapid Bus Transit, again, needs two-thousand riders per day or plus, and you're putting an apartment complex of eight stories, three-hundred people, and you're putting it right between two bus stops, and each one of them is going to have a car and is going to be, have lots of money. Those are not going to be your riders. And the building's not mixed-use, so it's not even supporting the whole concept of transit-oriented development. This is the, the exact not of what you're supposed to build. Because you've got a bunch of individual studios where people are going to be coming in going, and there's no collective, there's no sense of, you know, urban is a lot more different than suburban in terms of planning, and urban you need kind of spaces where people can collect and come together. A coffee shop at the basement or in the, you know, on the ground floor, something where people can cross each other. Here, you're going to have a bunch of people driving in and out through their parking garage, up to their solitary rooms, and yes, consuming and enjoying all the new things that are available in Blackstone, but I don't think it's going to lead to the community engagement that I see in Gifford Park. And.
I'm going to need you to wrap up now.
Okay, last point is that as a physician, I have to say that you all, as city planners, have an enormous health, impact on public health, and particularly with encouraging physical activity and social engagement. Clearly, if you get more riders on the bus and start building buildings without a car, and young professionals are the ones that will be most able to get used to an idea like that, it's not as foreign as it sounds. And so you're going to increase physical activity, and I'll tell you this, last point is that there is an epidemic of loneliness in this nation. And the way that cities are being designed encourages loneliness. And if you bring the mentality that you built the suburbs for the past fifty years, and you bring that mindset into east of Seventy-second, you're going to create more lonely people, you're not going to create a vibrant, diverse community that people, young professionals particularly, are going to want to live in.
Thank you, are there any other opponents? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Couple of things I wanted to address. One is the concern that a couple of individuals had about contracting and people that are not being paid appropriately and being paid under the table. I will say to you that this has happened, I, I will say to you that it is an issue. It is a problem, we need to address it. I've been meeting with you and others so that we can address this. I will tell you that when I was on the Building Commission, this came up. Councilmember Melton and I addressed it right away, and we got it straight right away. So I do recognize, and I think this council recognizes, that it is an issue that needs to be addressed, that taxpayers are taking it in the short end because individuals are being paid under the table and those taxes and other things are not being paid and not being supportive of the city, so we need to. being supportive of the city, so we need to address that. So, I want you to know that it has not gone unnoticed, and it has not gone without some continued research by staff members on council staff here, as well as myself and others, to address that. Secondly, the concern that was raised about market-rate housing, gentrification, and all of those kinds of dog whistle words that get people excited. Gentrification is a concern that, that was a concern that many people had in my district as it related to the land bank and some other things, and I know gentrification is a real serious issue and a real serious concern for a number of people in this community, especially in the district that I represent. However, as we address, and we really need to address, affordable housing, because we're at an affordable housing crisis in this city, as we are in most cities across the country. We have to address affordable housing, and we have to address it soon. And one of the things that I'm going to be asking developers in the future, because the focus you all have is on downtown, and I think there ought to be market, I mean, there ought to be affordable housing all over this city, so that it's not concentrated in a certain area, and you end up with the same problem that we've had fifteen or twenty years ago, trying to solve it again fifteen or twenty years in the future. So, there needs to be affordable housing, and developers need to address it in some way as they're doing developments as well, to talk about, and we need to at least begin the discussion about set-asides of affordable housing in some of these units that we are developing. But I don't think we ought to confine it to just the downtown area. I think we need to look at it across the board, but I think in a general sort of way, we've got to begin the process of addressing affordable housing in a more meaningful way than what we're doing right now, because we've got flood victims that are going to be heading this way. We've got people that are getting poorer and poorer, and resources are getting more and more scarce. We're going to have to address those kinds of things. So, I just wanted the people that had the concern about the contractors to know, we will be continuing to look at that, and we'll be continuing to work on that. I do think that we need to have a broader discussion about affordable housing, but not just in the downtown area, and not just in a couple of districts in the downtown area, but across this city, we need to address affordable housing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would also mention that, I don't know, Mr. Fanslaw, has it been two or three years that I've been writing your case, so to speak, about the slowness with which the city is adjusting its development requirements along mass transit routes in downtown and midtown, so as to promote mass transit, decrease the amount of car infrastructure that developers are required to incorporate into their projects, so that we can have greater availability in terms of prospects for affordable housing and other things along mass transit routes? Has it been two or three years now?
I think it's been two, maybe in between two and three.
And how long since the last time when I was, well, let's just say, less than pleased with the pace?
Well, I think we had a, Dave Fansel, city planner, I think we had a conversation a couple of months ago.
Yeah. And when did you tell me you thought we'd finally see something?
Well, I, what I told you was that we were concentrating on the TOD-BRT corridor, and the staff planning department's been working on that process for a couple of months. You should see something.
Right.
Master plan-wide by the end of the summer.
The point is, I'm trying to make here is amen to what you're saying on why there is no affordable housing along mass transit routes, because the price of dirt and the city's urban design rules and regulations require the parking that, which costs so much to build, that you priced yourselves right out of the units. And it's not going to be until we have a change in the city's policies and procedures that we'll be able to address that. Unfortunately, for Mr. Hassan Fuss's team, the rules of engagement for the property that exists now, according to the Law Department, we can't retroactively hold them hostage to change, so this project has to be based upon the current rules of engagement for development, which unfortunately perpetuate this problem that you spot-on identify. And I can't tell you that how frustrating it is when you have developers that want to do projects that have come along mass transit routes in downtown and midtown corridor that walk away, because it just doesn't, the economics don't work with what they can get for rent versus what it costs to build, particularly concrete infrastructure to house cars. The irony in this whole thing, as I see it, for you, Mr. Hassan Fuss, is you're about to commit tens of millions of dollars of your and your partner's money, is that what we're seeing, notwithstanding the city's requirements, is that not everyone is having a car. So, you're building infrastructure that only a fraction of which you're going to see is going to be utilized. And so, I would encourage to take that infrastructure, and rather than have painted stripes, you might consider more rideshare capabilities, you might have more bike infrastructure. But as I see it, the standards for deciding the merits of this have to be, according to law, what the rules are and our laws are right now, and unfortunately, it doesn't alleviate or in any way address the need for affordable housing in this city, which is enormous. The need is immense. So, with that, all I can do is tell you, you're right, but for the rules that apply to this project as exists today, we're required to vote on it within those parameters. Are there any other speakers? Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-three is approved, six to zero. Item thirty-four, resolution to approve the creation of street improvement project 2019-05 for the improvement in Pulperton Avenue from Seventy-Eighth Avenue to Seventy-Eighth Street, consisting of grading, storm sewerage, curbing, and paving in Portland cement concrete.
The public hearing on item number thirty-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-four is approved, six to zero. Item thirty-five, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Firewater Grill located at seven zero zero seven Grover Street.
The public hearing on item number thirty-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Is there, Madam Clerk, any contact from the applicant as to why they might not be here today?
Not that I'm aware of. I know a letter was sent to the applicant to be here.
Sometimes we have a language barrier. Is there anybody here on Baba Buddha? Do we have time to lay it over to the next meeting?
We do.
Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero. Item thirty-six, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Voodoo Taco located at two five zero two Farnham Street.
The public hearing on item number thirty-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, Mr. President, a member of the council, Mike Kelly.
Now, with Mr. Kelly, you're going to have to make sure you're on your A-game today, because you have a special observer here.
I'm very nervous. My granddaughter's in the audience, yes. A lot of pressure. Twenty-eight oh four, South Eightieth Seventh Avenue, here for Voodoo Taco with Rich Anderson. We're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-six is approved, six to zero. Item thirty-seven, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for Porky Butts Barbecue located at one five four seven five Ruggles Street, suites one oh five to one oh seven.
The public hearing on item number thirty-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Again, Mr. President, Mike Kelly, twenty-eight oh four, South Eightieth Seventh Avenue. Appearing here with Blaine and Dana Hunter, who are here, and we're here for any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
I'm sorry. We have a light.
Okay. No, I just wanted to say, welcome to the district, and I think the name alone, Porky Butts Barbecue, that'll get people's curiosity up, just to come and check it out.
I thought of a couple of jokes, but with my granddaughter here, I couldn't.
You can't. Maybe we can all meet there for some barbecue. I think there was a motion in the second.
Yes. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item thirty-seven is approved, six to zero. Item thirty-eight, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Midtown Gas and Grocery located at one two two two, South Twenty-fourth Street.
The public hearing on item number thirty-eight begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Yes, it's unlisted on the agenda.
Good afternoon. My name is Amir Pinto. Address, one six zero seven one Redmond Avenue.
Okay, thank you. Are any other proponents? Any opponents?
Farhan Siddiqui. One one zero three seven Leavenworth Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. Proponent?
Yes.
Thanks. Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Will the applicants come forward, please? Mr. Siddiqui and... The current license has a restriction on single sales, I believe. You willing to continue on with the same terms and conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need any amendment, or just?
With the...
Motion with the agreement that they'll continue the existing conditions. Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item thirty-nine, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Made in Omaha located at eight seven two two Pacific Street.
The public hearing on item number thirty-nine begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Nicholas Huff, owner of Made in Omaha, eight seven two two Pacific Street.
Happy to answer any questions?
What?
Are you happy to answer any questions?
Yes.
That's what people normally say, so I just...
I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirty-nine is approved, six to zero. Item forty, an application to consider a Class D liquor license for Sam Mart located at four eight five four Q Street.
The public hearing on item number forty begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
My name is Hassan Abaid, four eight five four Q Street.
Welcome. Happy to answer any questions?
No.
Yes.
The other, yeah, the other no. Two noes make a yes. Do you want to speak?
I'm Mr. Martin. I work with him.
And your address?
Forty-eight fifty-four Q Street.
Thank you. Welcome.
From Nebraska, six eight one one seven.
Are there any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Gray.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item forty is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Item forty-one, an application to consider a Class CK liquor license for the Hustler Club located at two six one five, South Hundred and Twentieth Street.
The public hearing on item forty-one begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Shane Harrington, fifty-five ten North Eighty-third Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Happy to answer any questions, or did you want to make a presentation?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I'd be glad to answer any questions, and I'd love to read something to the city council as well. I have copies for each of you, if that is okay.
Yeah, you can hand the copies to the clerk, because she'll distribute them while you talk.
Perfect. Thank you.
I'm actually a little nervous. This is kind of different for me. I feel really small after hearing about your billion-dollar deals that you make decisions on. Makes me seem a little, a little less important. So, I wrote a letter about four or five days ago, and I just want to read it to you. I wrote it in my living room, thinking about all of this, so here we go. "I believe that I have the expertise and character necessary to qualify for a liquor license based upon successfully operating five clubs in Nebraska since 2015, in Omaha, Grand Island, Hastings, and Buffalo County. I completed the online liquor training and other experience operating bars and nightclubs, including The Grove in Lincoln, Red Nine in Lincoln, The Shed in Hastings. Members of the city council and other Nebraska authorities have asked me to obtain a license, liquor license, bottle club license, so now I found the appropriate property, and here I am asking for one. There are many contributions to the community that I've been making for many of years that I think should be considered by the city council. I have donated tens of thousands of dollars to charities and charitable events in Nebraska, including the city mission Voices of Hope, the Lincoln Food Bank, Visionary Youth, monthly donations to St. Jude's Children's Hospital, and every year I donate money to Oasis Back-to-School Free Backpack and Haircut for kids who can't afford those things. I have donated money to send gifted young athletes across the country to represent Nebraska at various events. A few years ago, I started a fundraiser called Help Lincoln and raised thousands of dollars for a mother of two who was dying of cancer. I have donated to many people on Facebook, from a family's dog that needed life-saving surgery, to a girl whose parents couldn't afford to get her a prom dress. I've sponsored several MMA events, mixed martial arts, which have provided entertainment for thousands of Nebraskans. I've also donated many hours and days of my time, personal time, for these and other charitable causes." These are just some examples. There are many more instances of charitable contributions and positive impacts in the community that I have paid. I've also helped hundreds of young ladies who have worked at my five clubs. Many of these entertainers were in really bad situations, some living in their cars, some living on the streets. I have helped numerous young women get out of abusive relationships and helped them become better mothers of their children using my own experience as a father of two. I have helped my entertainers build their credit, buy their first car, get their first apartment. I have helped my entertainers stop smoking, stop taking drugs. I have encouraged some of them to even return back to school. My businesses have provided employment to hundreds of people in Nebraska, and I have used local vendors and contractors for all my businesses. I do not want to fight with anyone in Omaha or Nebraska. I just want to be treated as an equal, nothing more, nothing less. Please give me this opportunity to obtain my liquor license without passing new laws specifically targeting me and my businesses, and I think you'll be pleasantly surprised how well we do end up meshing. Just because I don't believe in your Christian God or live my life how you do doesn't mean that I'm a bad person. I'm just a different person than you, and that should be okay. I pay my taxes like you. I spend time with my family and friends just like you. I have kids like you. I also have an amazing dog, Beavis, who sat on my lap while I wrote this to you. I'm far from perfect, but let me show you all the positive things I can accomplish if I no longer have to worry about the future of my company every moment. When I have extra time and money to do more good for Omaha and Nebraska, I will do it. It's easy to focus on the negative things about someone, but you can miss a lot of the good that they've done too."
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Ms. Melton?
Uh, yeah, well, first I have a couple of questions for...
Unless she's called you up.
Mr. Harrington. So, first, I was reading your application and you applied for a catering license, but you serve very little food according to your... Why are you, why did you apply for a catering license?
Well, we are actually, I'm going to buy the entire building in the next couple of years, and so that would give me three bays. And our thought was, we have a huge parking lot that could hold, you know, hundreds of people, and so we thought, you know, to try an event out in the parking lot where, you know, we have bands or live music or something along those lines. It would be nice to be able to cater in our own liquor so that we could actually make profit possibly off of something that's going to be fairly pricey to do.
So you're planning to have events in the parking lot outside?
Possibly, yeah. Something that we've thought about, other places have done it, it's done well, you know, there's, there's bars in Lincoln that have done, you know, big street dances and parking lot parties and things of that nature, so. It, it's not something that we have to do. We were just thinking of all the different ideas, you know, that, that were possible. We didn't think that there would be a big objection to it. If there is, the catering license is not, um, is not a, a big thing for us. It was just something we wanted to try to see if it could generate more money and also more people to our area.
So with that, I know in your previous location, you've had women that barely have anything on but pasties stand out on the corner of Seventy-second Dodge. Is that something that you're going to do in the parking lot when you have these events as well?
No, the, the events wouldn't be adult-related. The events would be things that would bring in more of a mainstream crowd that we could hopefully get into our establishments, show them that they actually are fun, that we have a lot of couples and a lot of females and a lot of everyday people actually attending on a regular basis. The, the problem is, is because of all the negative stigma articles and things that, that have went back and forth with us, you know, it has scared some people who I think that we could get into the club if we had other avenues to get them there.
And then I was also looking, so you're going to have a door between... So, the Hustler Club is the, is the club that is going to have the alcohol.
Yes, ma'am.
And then you have Club One Twenty next door.
Yes, ma'am.
Which you will have all of your, the, your nude dancing.
Yes.
It's my understanding that you, are you currently, I read in the newspaper that you stated you're allowing people to bring their own alcohol currently into Club Omaha Now.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and you understand, though, that there's a statute that doesn't allow you to do that.
We do not believe that we apply to that statute, and I do believe we're going to be victorious in court. We actually have a hearing with the Nebraska Supreme Court over some of those rulings soon, so my lawyer would be better to explain that, though, to you.
I just wanted to make sure that what I read was, was true, that it wasn't fake news, that you actually are...
Yes, yes.
You admittedly are allowing, are bringing, letting people bring alcohol in and...
Yeah, we don't believe that we're breaking the law. We don't believe the statute applies to us and, and we...
Okay, I, you answered the question, so you verified that that's what you're doing. In the event that we would, if I were to grant, if I were to vote yes to grant you a liquor license, would you allow, because part of the, having the liquor license is being able to give law enforcement the ability to make sure that laws are being followed.
Yes.
That minors aren't drinking alcohol. That people are safe, because sometimes when alcohol is consumed, that's sometimes when we find sexual assaults occur.
Yes.
And things of that nature. Would you allow law enforcement to have access to Club One Twenty as well?
Oh, you mean Club Omaha as well as...
Club Omaha, I'm sorry.
Uh, if we were granted a liquor license, um, I mean, if we kept it a private club, I would rather not, and the reason why is because the anonymity, the idea of a private membership club is that, you know, these people, people don't know they're there. There's a strict contract that they have to sign, like, it, 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 for some reason it works. I, I don't know why it works either. People just, they love the idea of being a member, a part of something exclusive.
My question was, would you allow law enforcement onto the other side?
If we removed it from being a private membership club, yes, which is something I'm considering. If we kept it a private membership club, I, I'm not sure if, if I would or not.
Well, I'm asking, would you make that part of this liquor license? That they, that they would have access to the other side to make sure that there isn't alcohol being consumed in there? Or, or that, you know, people are safe and...
Yeah, I, I, again, I would have to speak to my attorney on that, because I, I, I don't, I don't want to say that I'll do something that opens up. I, I've just, in the past, things haven't gone well.
The answer, the answer was yes or no. Thank you. Mr. Cousy? Thank you, Mr. Harrington.
You might, yeah, good, stay nearby in case anyone else asks quick. You can sit down, but just stay nearby. Thanks.
Matt Cousy, Law Department.
All right, thank you for coming down, and, Mr. Cousy, I just, you're the city prosecutor, and I know that we have talked about this at length. Could you just state the difference, whether him, whether Mr., having Mr. Harrington have a liquor license versus not having a liquor license? Could you just kind of give us the, the facts of, or the benefits of having a liquor license as opposed to if we denied it today?
I think the council has a unique opportunity today to give Mr. Harrington a liquor license for his proposed building next door to the Club Omaha facility. It does have an enforcement angle to it. I, I'm not saying anything that's not common knowledge, that Mr. Harrington isn't already aware of by virtue of having a license. It does allow an enforcement aspect of it from law enforcement to go in to the facility at pretty much any time that they want and to make sure that all laws, including the liquor laws, are being followed and obeyed. So I, I do think that Mr. Harrington is putting himself in a position where he's obviously agreeable to that, since he applied for the license, and that the council's in a position to grant him or at least recommend a license for him that would assist in that possible enforcement aspect.
And, and in the event, like, and I, I just kind of, you made a, a point earlier that could Mr. Harrington have first gotten the, the liquor license and we wouldn't be able to stop him from opening, um, Club Omaha next door, correct?
If he had done this, I guess, in the reverse, if he had opened the bar, gotten a license, and then the next bay on either side of him became available and he purchased it or leased it, and opened it up in a fashion that he operates Club Omaha, I don't believe there's anything the council could do about that, because it doesn't involve a liquor license from the council.
And, and we don't, we can't regulate anything that goes on in Club Omaha under the current law at this point, other than the, the current statute that I, I won't go into, but...
Correct.
Other than, there's no al, as long as there's no alcohol and no liquor license, then the clubs can have the full nudity, correct?
That is my understanding, and if I'm mistaken, there's three other city attorneys in the room to correct me.
Thank you, Mr. Cousy. I have no further questions at this time. I might, I, I might later. And then I'll, what I'll do is I would like to let the other council members ask their questions, and then I have a few things to say, so I may put my...
Thank you.
Button again.
Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Cousy, can I have you come back up just for a couple of others and...
Matt Cousy, City Law Department.
So, what are, what are typically some of the criteria that the, that the city would look at when considering a liquor license?
I would defer to Mr. Acosta Trejo on that in terms of what you should be considering. That's more of in his farmhouse than mine.
All right, I might ask him in, in a minute then. But at least, we're a recommending body. The, the final say, obviously, is with the State Liquor Commission, correct?
That much I do know.
Okay, all right. And are you familiar about the number of police reports or police activity calls to the, to the current area?
Yes.
And can you summarize those?
Yes. At his current location, um, to the best of my knowledge, I get daily informational reports from the Omaha Police Department about issues going on all over the city. I'm not aware of any law enforcement-related calls or incidents at Mr. Harrington's current location. And I suppose, the next question might be about his prior location. In terms of his prior location, any incident that occurred didn't involve Mr. Harrington, his staff, or his establishment. It involved individuals who had too much fun at his establishment and were asked to leave and didn't want to.
Okay. And then, thank you. And I just want to make sure we kind of paint the picture of how this is situated. I mean, it's, it's kind of been referred to, and I wish maybe we've got a, I don't think I've got a, a plan of the site, but... So you have Club Omaha, which exists today, on the, there are three bays in the strip center. You have Club Omaha on the far north bay, and the middle bay is currently Rehab Lounge, which is, is the establishment that I think Mr. Harrington is either buying or has, is purchasing. And then you have, which, and that has an existing Class C liquor license. And then on the, the south bay of that center, you have, I, I believe it's a dry cleaner or a cleaning establishment, something of that nature. So I, I just wanted to be sure that we all understood what the, the current makeup is of that, of that, um, site. So, Mr. Harrington, could I have you come up? I had a couple of questions as well.
Yes, sir.
So, can you explain the operational relate, actually, the operational relationship between Club Omaha and Club One Twenty, which is doing business as Hustler or Hustler Club?
Essentially, the reason that we're going to two clubs is because, um, even if we win the lawsuit in, uh, you know, Nebraska Supreme Court, and they deem that we are not a bottle club, and I'm happy and I'm jumping up and down, I'm really not happy, and I don't think you guys will be either. And the reason why is if I win that case, anybody can go and open up a full nude BYOB establishment in Omaha based on that ruling. That doesn't help you, that doesn't help me, because you get people like a new club that came to town, I won't say their name, but they, they have had, had, they've had a lot of problems, and they would gladly open those doors back up and bring liquor in if they were able to. And so, that's what we're basically, we're trying to alleviate is the city saying that we're breaking the law or doing something wrong. So we pull the liquor out of Club Omaha, but people in Nebraska still drink. I mean, let's be honest, bars do very well. And so, we give them a place that's legal and safe to drink that you can regulate right next door. And so it sort of serves two purposes. It's not ideal for me. For me, I would rather have initially, I would just like to have my BYOB club with the full nudity. But I also know that that is something that, uh, the city attorneys, uh, the city council, and the state of Nebraska has made very clear that, that they're, they are not going to allow that. If this law doesn't apply to us, they're going to find one that does.
Okay, but, I, really, the, the, part of the question, though, is that, I mean, these are, these are separate entities. I mean, you're, you're buying...
Yeah, yes.
Rehab, and, but there is, so, I'll go to, kind of, I was going to go to this later, but I'll go to it now, since we're talking about the relationship. Is there currently, or in your plan, you talk about having a, a point of transition between the two operations?
Yes, sir.
A, a door.
Yes, sir.
Is there currently that, is there currently that ability to move from Club Rehab into your establishment today?
Yes and no. There, there, we used to be, there's two doors, one on either side. They just put up a, a sheet of drywall. So there's basically just a sheet of drywall. There's the door, the steps on both sides to do the transition, and years ago, it, it was open to both. But at this current time, there's a, a sheet of drywall. Our main concern with having the point of, for the traffic exchange is for the dancers. If it pleases the city council that no customers or members use that, that walkway, I could live with that. What I can't have is, is the, the ladies, you know, they, they don't, they're, they're dancers. They don't have a lot of clothes on, and the idea of having them walk outside every time, because they'll be dancing at both sides. They, they've made it clear that, you know, yeah, I want the opportunity to dance to locations and, and make revenue streams at both. And so if I've got to walk them outside every time when it's twenty below zero or a hundred and ten degrees out, or whatever the case may be, that's not really what, I don't think what the city wants, not what we want. You know, it's safety issues, things of that nature, but, but we would, I would concede to having that point of passage to be just for the entertainers and management staff and security that work at the club if, if that would, would please the city council.
Okay, so I, I want to make sure that that's on the record. You would agree that if there was a transition, a, a point of transition between the, the two establishments, that it would be for employee use only and not for patrons?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
No patrons, no members.
Okay.
And we would concede the Class K license, if that's an issue.
That was going to be later too, but as long as we're on that issue. So you'll concede to drop the, the Class K application?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, it, it was, again, it was just something we were thinking of different options, different ideas.
Okay, and then in a letter that I believe your attorney wrote to one of the city attorneys, you had, or at least he had represented, that if you were to receive a liquor license for the Rehab Lounge or soon to be Hustler, um, that Club Omaha would be alcohol-free permanently?
Yes, yes, we would.
You would agree to that as well?
Yes, there would be no alcohol ever again in Club Omaha.
Okay, so, having said that, I want to, now I want to go back to what Mrs., uh, Councilmember Melton had asked as well.
Yes, sir.
If you're willing to support, or if you're willing to support the statement or to make the affirmation that there would be no alcohol allowed into Club Omaha?
Yes, sir.
Why wouldn't you agree to allow law enforcement to come in to make those occasional checks?
The issue that we run into is, is...
My question is, how, how can you say that there will be no alcohol and we're just supposed to, to believe it on, on the word?
Again, I, you know, I'm going to have to talk to my attorney, because there's a lot of things that, that have not went our way and that, that people have said and done things that they didn't agree to, and so I want to make sure that whatever I agree to, that, that it is fair for everyone and, and that I'm not, you know, uh, cutting off my own foot and, and, you know, because that's a concern.
But you've also said that, that you would permanently not allow any alcohol into Club Omaha.
But you have to understand, City Councilmember, um, then it becomes something different. Then they come in and now they start passing you past a different ordinance based on the nudity, or it, 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 you see the domino effect. I mean, when I first came into Omaha, um, the city attorney said that what we were doing was perfectly legal. Uh, there was no laws, no ordinances against having a full nude establishment, BYOB. Then within a year or so of being there, there's one on the state level, there's one on the city level, so you have to understand where I'm coming from, what's next. And I have to protect my business and, and my employees, my managers, my dancers, um, you know, from, from future, you know, scrutiny that we may face.
All right, so, again, at least you've said that there will be no alcohol allowed into Club Omaha by anyone, if, if you were to get this liquor license.
And, and I have no problem if the, I, okay, let's go one further. I have no problem with law enforcement coming into Club Omaha as long as it's in a fair manner. Meaning, they're not coming into our club six times a night or, or every single night or something of that nature, because I have seen that in the past. I've seen where a bar gets on the bad side of the city or state, and then the police are there every single night. They're harassing their customers, checking their IDs constantly, they're parked in their parking lot all night long, and those are things that can drive a business out of business.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm going to ask you to sit down for just a minute. I'll, I'll have you come back up, because I had more questions, but I want to take this little break to ask Mr. Cousy some questions that relates to what you just said.
All right, and I'm going to convene with my lawyer then as well, too, while you're doing that.
Matt Cousy, City Law Department.
Matt, so if, if, if the, if there's an agreement that, um, that the operator, which is a separate entity than the, the liquor license, I understand, that we're talking about, but if he's agreed to never have alcohol in Club Omaha, again, unrelated to what we're considering, how might that be enforced?
I could legitimately, I think, make an argument that the agreement that you're brokering with Mr. Harrington is tied to his liquor license and therefore allows the officers that enforcement angle. I'm not so good at thinking on my feet as I used to be, but I do think that's a legitimate argument I can make, although Michelle's nodding her head at me, but I think it's a legitimate argument that I can make, that if you're tying it to the liquor license, then that does allow, at least me to make, I know this, it allows me to at least make the argument that the license applies to the structure in terms of the enforcement aspect, to make sure that truly no alcohol is being served at that facility.
Okay, thank you. Will, could I, I'm sorry, could you please come down? I had a, I had a couple of questions earlier for you, and I almost forgot, but I was reminded by...
Matt was doing a good job. William Acosta Trejo, Assistant City Attorney.
Thank you. I'll go back to the question I was asking too, about when, when, when reviewing, um, a liquor license application, both for the city, at the city level or the municipality level, local jurisdiction, as well as the State Liquor Commission. Could you kind of give some, um, some criteria that's generally looked at?
Sure. Uh, there's multiple statutes that you look at when you're discussing a liquor license or a liquor application. Fifty-three one twenty-five generally discusses the classes of persons to which no license will be provided. And so that is people who are either foreign corporations, people who have felony convictions. Uh, there's different criteria. Once you pass that, then you get to fifty-three one thirty-two of the statutes that talks about what are the things that both the local governing body and the Liquor Control Commission are looking at. And usually with that, you're looking at nature of the neighborhood, um, citizen complaints, the recommendation of the local, uh, body...
the recommendation of the local body, you're looking at pedestrian traffic flow, adequacy of law enforcement, zoning issues, sanitation issues, and so that's where you get the bulk of the things that you're considering.
Okay. And then in your review of the criminal record and some of the other items that you just discussed, what, what's your interpretation, or what's your kind of read, if you will, on, on the applicant?
There were no automatic disqualifiers on the application, so as I mentioned, fifty-three, one-twenty-five, classes to whom no license is given, none of those kicked in. So then you look at fifty-three, one-thirty-two criteria, and that's essentially what you all have to discuss and come up with your decision here.
Okay. And then I'll, I'll ask kind of the same question I was asking Mr. Cousy as it relates to this, the last line of questioning we were having with Mr. Harrington as it relates to Club Omaha, even though that's not part of this application. But he has said that if, if he were to get, receive a liquor license for the middle bay of the center, that he would no longer allow any alcohol into Club Omaha. And he's, he's agreed to that on the record. And my question was to him, you know, if, if, if that would, if, if he would then agree to allow law enforcement to make an occasional check to make sure that's not happening, if he were to agree to that, how enforceable do you think that might be?
Well, ultimately, how Mr. Harrington conducts his business, we'll, we'll see how he does that. As far as the enforcement aspect, the name that the application in this in, this, excuse me, the name that this application is in is the name or the entity that will have the liquor license. Mr. Harrington is, I'm assuming, either the principal or the president of this corporation. And so as that, the liquor license and any violations that result from that will fall to that entity and Mr. Harrington. So if there is a violation, and then we see this throughout the city, we had discussions this morning at Law Committee, we see where there's issues that happen outside in parking lots and street corners and things of that nature, those violations still go back to that license. So just because there is another bay where he is also conducting business, is a violation there, is a violation on his liquor license. And at that point, it's enforceable under the Liquor Control Act.
Okay, that's good to know. Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Harrington? Yeah, Mr. Harrington, please. I won't, actually, I was just kind of thinking about this, I, I would think there might be some existing code, and I know you don't own the Rehab Lounge yet, or I don't believe you do, but I, I was tempted to ask my, the, the planning director if there are probably some code issues as it relates to the, the door, the transition just being plywood at this point, but I'll, I'll let that go at this point. But I want to, I want to kind of go back and summarize some of the things we talked about. So if you were to get this, transition is for employees only, not patrons?
Yes, sir.
And obviously, no alcohol would be able to, to go from, from the middle bay to Club Omaha?
Exactly.
Okay, you're going to drop the K application?
Yes, sir.
You agree to no alcohol in Club Omaha?
Yes, sir.
And you've heard what Mr. Cousy and Mr. Acosta Trejo said about what they think the enforceability is?
Yes, sir.
And you were going to, I think, have a conversation with your attorney? Do you have something to report back?
Yes, so we came up with a idea that possibly would work, something like limited searches for alcohol only.
I don't know what that means.
So if that's, just like, that, that would be the search, it would be for alcohol, they're not in, you know, checking the club for, you know, various other things, you know, that, that's our concern, is that they come in and then they're, they're, you know, you guys are trying to look for other things, and then this, and then that, and then it just, it snowballs into, you know, I don't even know what.
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, that's, so if, yeah...
So if your concern is alcohol, which you've made very clear, then a limited search for alcohol, if they want to come in every now and again to make sure there's not alcohol in there, if that makes the city council happy, if that makes the Liquor Commission happy, the city and state in Nebraska happy, then, then that's, you know, then that's fine with us.
All right, hold on one minute, I need to ask, so... Attorney rather than Councilmember Melton, but, so I, actually, I will, Mr. Cousy. Yeah, I'm going to test, I'm going to test Mrs. Melton's...
Matt Cousy, City Attorney's Office.
So I guess the question would be if, if, if they were agreeable to that provision, and, and law enforcement were to enter looking for alcohol and found something else that is not lawful in plain sight, would there be, would there be an ability to take action on that?
The case law is pretty clear that, let's not, how about we not use Mr. Harrington?
Yeah.
Let's just use a different situation, someone gets pulled over and there's suspicion of drunk driving, and they find, or have evidence to believe that there is some blood leaking from the trunk. Officers, Supreme Court, federal courts are very clear that that gives them probable cause to then look in the trunk and find a dead body.
Okay.
You can't put limitations on the Fourth Amendment like that or on police officers. It's not just, they go in only looking for alcohol and ignore anything else that's happening in their surroundings.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harrington, so I think, from what I heard you say, that you would, you would be acceptable for them to come in looking for violations of alcohol?
Yeah, I think you misunderstood.
Oh, I did?
The, the initial visit is alcohol-related. If you see a crime, of course you...
Okay, all right.
I would want them to arrest the person, I would, you know, like, that, that's without question.
All right.
We don't allow any illegal activity in our club, so we, we, we would never want to start that.
Perfect, good to hear.
Just something where they're not going out of their way for just, you know, this, that, we're coming in, and then it becomes an everyday thing.
Okay, yeah, I don't, yeah, I'll let that go. So one other thing, on the backside or the east side of Rehab?
Yes, sir.
I think there's a patio area?
Yes, sir, they have like a fenced-in lattice-type area.
Are you planning on doing any outside entertainment there?
No, it's just, would be the smoking area.
Okay, so no, no live or, or...
No.
Or amplified music?
No.
On speakers?
No music out there at all.
Okay, I want to make that, I'd make that part of that as well.
Yeah, that's fine, it would just be a smoking area, so that's it.
All right. That's all I have for right now, I might also have some comments later as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Melton?
Mr. Harrington, I have just one more question. So I appreciate your willingness to drop the Class K, and it may come that you want to advertise or, or do something. Could, could we ask that you also, if you're going to have your women ever stand outside, that they at least wear bikinis and not naked for children that are driving by?
Yeah, and we, we actually, I took no pleasure in standing on the street corner in my boxer shorts at 43 years old. It was one of the most embarrassing things I've ever done. But at that point, I, I, you know, I didn't feel like we had any choice. We, we felt like we were being attacked, and we had to make a stance, and, you know, we don't have the money and the resources and the connections that, that, that other people had, and at that point, there was desperation, and, and it wasn't something that we wanted to do or were proud of doing.
Okay, but my question would be, would, would you agree that, that any of your employees or dancers, if you're going to do any kind of advertising?
Oh, that was, yeah, no.
Or protesting, or whatever else you want to do on the corner?
Yeah, that was the only time that we, we ever did go out.
Would you agree that they would wear the minimum of bikinis?
I, I can agree to that, but we won't be doing that anymore. We just want a liquor license and just disappear.
Well, but I would like, I would like to put that on there so that we don't worry about driving our kids to the grocery store?
Yes, if, if, yeah, if that...
Or to marry our queen and having naked girls on the corner.
If, if, if that pleases the city council, yes, we will agree to bikini girls, but I, again, that's not how we want to promote, and it's not something we want to do at all.
Do they have a transition where they use that, too?
Right, I agree. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Kratz, are you available for a few questions?
Sure, Paul Kratz, City Attorney.
Correct me if, if my sense of what Mr. Acosta Trejo and Mr. Cousy have been saying without really coming all out and saying it, is if there are these conditions that have been outlined by Councilmembers Melton and Harding, that Mr. Harrington has said he would agree to, which by the way, would require a, a motion to amend the application to, just to see now at CK, the law department, your office, is actually recommending, the council recommend approval?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, I think with the conditions outlined here, Mr. Harrington probably satisfies the various requirements that we see that the law imposes at this point.
Okay. All right, thank you. Sir? All right, Mr. Harding, you're back up.
Mr. Harrington, one other thing, I...
Yes, sir.
And I, I, I'm not sure exactly how to, to approach this one, because I, in, in your attorney's letter to, to Will, there was some mention, I, I didn't like the way it was really framed. Excuse me, but I'll use a term, it felt like blackmail, to say, if I get this, we'll drop all the lawsuits that are pending. But I want to address that as well, too. If, if we agree, or if we vote in favor of granting this, or not granting, but giving the recommendation to the state for the liquor license, will you agree to drop all those lawsuits as the state in the later letter?
Yeah, once, yeah, once we have our liquor license in hand, we will drop all lawsuits that are pertaining to the bottle club, to the, any, any protesting, anything that we have on record. I think there's three current lawsuits, if my memory serves me correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion? Ms. Melton?
And thank you for giving me a second opportunity to speak, Mr. President. You know, I, I, I know that Mr. Harrington has no doubt that I don't approve of tis business, or, or the things that... Well, I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that, I, I think there's no question. But I also know that Senator Theresa Thibodeau, who happens to be in the audience today, did spend an entire year trying to pass a statute to regulate bottle clubs, so that bottle clubs, you would have to have a liquor license. And it wasn't for one person or one establishment. In fact, there's bottle clubs all over the state, there's, they're not just strip clubs, some of them are axe-throwing clubs, some of them are, you can go in and have anger destroying clubs. I mean, there's all kinds of different bottle clubs, and they're all over, they're all over the state. But for the safety of the people that go into bottle clubs, we wanted to make sure that there is, they have to get a liquor license that they can be regulated. In this particular case, again, I, I don't like the business, but the Supreme Court has said that, that it, these businesses are legal, and I can't, I can't change that. But I think that the concessions that Mr. Harrington has made, and the fact that there will be alcohol, that Club Omaha will now permanently be alcohol-free, in my opinion, makes the employees and the dancers, puts them in a safer position than they would be if we said no to the liquor license. So getting these concessions from Mr. Harrington, I think is better than the alternative of denying the liquor license and having it remain exactly the way it is. Where we really don't have a lot of control, we can send officers, we could potentially send officers in undercover to try and check them out, but actually, that's not really what Chief Schmodder would like to do with his officer's time. I think there are better things that our officers can do with their time in other parts of the city than try and regulate on a daily basis the, the kind of activity that happens in Mr. Harrington's establishment. So I know people will be very surprised probably by my vote, but because of the concessions Mr. Harrington is willing to make, I think this is much better than the way it exists today. So because of that, and I believe former Senator Thibodeau actually agrees with this analysis, and we've talked about it quite a bit, what we want to make sure, we want to make sure that people are safe, that cut, the customers are safe, that they're old enough to drink, that they're old enough to be in the establishment, and that the employees are safe as well. And I think this provides a little more measure of at least safety for me. So although there was a lot of things that Mr. Harrington's done that I don't care for, that I think are despicable, I think having, giving him, granting that license today is actually better for the city overall.
Thank you, Mr. Harding.
I, too, think some might be surprised by my vote today, but as, I would agree wholeheartedly with, with what Councilmember Melton just said. I think, I think this is actually, gives us, I think, a hammer, if you will, if needed, provide, it'll end up with the concessions that I think we've had Mr. Harrington agree to, provide for a safer environment that might currently exist, or might exist in the future. So with that, I think I'm, I'll, I'll make, yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, yeah, I know that. So I'll, I'll make the, the motion to amend, which Mr. Harrington has agreed to, to drop the K, so amend this to a Class C application. And then along with that, that the, any transition between the two establishments, that being Club Omaha and Club One-Twenty doing business as Hustler, be for employees only, and I guess I, I should also maybe ask, as a quick aside to law, if, if they are not W-two employees, or if they're not ten, W-two employees, if they're ten ninety-nines, if that would still cover the...
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, I don't think that would make any difference as far as your restrictions.
Okay, okay, so transition for employees only, no alcohol in Club Omaha ever, no live music on the patio or piped-in music, all lawsuits would be dropped, and then, then law enforcement would be able to enter Club Omaha for the purposes to make sure that there is no alcohol being consumed, or, or in, in the present, and, and then...
Outside, they'll have these bikinis.
Okay, so, and then, as, if any of the employees are to go outside of the premises, that they are at least clad in bikinis. Can't believe that's part of the motion, but that's the motion.
Thank you. And I'll second the motion.
Okay, so Madam Clerk, will we be voting on the amendment only to begin, and then as amended with conditions?
That's my understanding, how we typically do it.
Okay, so on the amendment to the Class C, and then, okay.
Right. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
That motion is passed, six to zero.
As amended with the conditions outlined?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed?
Recommended approval, and now go to the Liquor Commission.
Thank you very much, City Council.
Item forty-two, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Love's Jazz and Arts Center for an outdoor area for the Native Omaha Days on Thursday, August first, Friday, August second, and Saturday, August third, 2019, from nine PM to two AM with music until two AM each night.
The public hearing on item number forty-two begins at this time, are there any proponents?
I'm Jerry D. Washington, Director of Love Jazz and Arts Center, my address is fifty-three, twenty-five, North Twenty, Twenty-seventh Avenue, that's where I live.
Thank you.
And I'd be glad to answer any questions.
There you go. By the way, if you're still on the agenda, and if you've made it this far, you really have impressed us. have impressed us. If you're just here to watch what's going on, you've even really impressed us more. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very briefly, for those of you who may not know, you know, Native Omaha Days is coming up and that's usually a really great time along North Twenty-fourth Street from about Burdette Street to about Ohio Street and sometimes even further. But it's a really great event and I would encourage people to attend. It's a lot of fun and you get to see a lot of people from Omaha that some of you haven't seen for a number of years. So I'm very supportive of this license and so, thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item forty-two is approved, six to zero.
Thank you.
Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the City Council Rules of Order.
I believe we have items, request forty-eight through fifty be removed from consent. So if there's a motion, it'll be on forty-three through forty-seven. Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Forty-three through forty-seven are approved, six to zero. And forty-eight through fifty is the 2019 annexation package.
Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. And not to sound like a broken record, I know why we have annexation and I know it's a luxury here in Omaha, but so are roads that we have to travel on, especially in my district, each and every day. If you have the luxury yourself to invest in your road in RMD or an SID, that's great. And if you don't, we have another option and that's to, to grade your road hopefully a couple times a year. I know it was a pretty brutal winter, we're all well aware of that. And unfortunately, in case you don't know, I've heard that we probably won't get out to these unapproved roads a couple times this year. So that means those folks who don't have that luxury will just have to suffer, I guess, because of the way we go about fixing roads. So as I sit here and advocate for my constituents, it's really tough to continue to spread our resources thin. In case you don't know as well, local two fifty-one employees have worked overtime and I'm not sure if they still are working overtime, but they've worked more hours than probably all of us here. And that's unfortunate and it's for what they're behind on and it's the roads. Now, I don't know how we're sitting on personnel, and I should, I will say last I heard, we were still down on AEO ones and those are the men and women who mainly work on the roads. We were down in that classification. So for me to sit here and see us be stretched more thin, and even if it's one block or one lane mile, then, then shame on me. And in this particular case, I believe it's fourteen lane miles. So here we are, and again, I know why we do this and I know the process, but we have to look at the big picture here. Well, what's, what's, what's suffering? What are we stretching ourselves to gain in this particular package, which we all know is much smaller than previous years? I just can't sit back and, and not say that and stress that enough as I continue to get complaints each and every day. And I know we all receive these same emails. There's been over two thousand claims to the city this year for potholes. I know a couple hundred have been denied and a few hundred more have either been paid or made an offer, but that's still a lot withstanding out there. This problem isn't solved with the, the path we're on. So I guess with that, that's it. Thank you.
Sir, motion? Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Yes. Pauls?
No.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion is approved, five to one.
The public hearings on items fifty-one through seventy-three are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or opponent. Are you a manager application? Welcome.
Hi.
What not, item number are you?
I believe I'm fifty-one.
And your name and address?
My name is Sheila Cabares. My address is one oh one two one Plymouth Point, Apartment F in Bellevue, Nebraska.
Well, thanks for coming today and being so patient till we got here.
Thank you for having me. I'll be happy answering any questions you may have.
Unless there's anyone else, we'll close the public hearing. Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to zero.
Thank you.
Item seventy-four, a resolution to approve the appointment of Teresa Thibodeau as a regular member of the City of Omaha Personnel Board commencing immediately and expiring on January twenty-eighth, 2021.
Good afternoon, Councilmember.
The public hearing on item seventy-four begins at this time. Are there any proponents?
Thank you, President Jerome. My name is Teresa Thibodeau. I live at one two eight one one Izzard Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one five four. I just want to say thank you for considering me. I am here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Well, I know there's one, but she can't talk.
She can't vote for you.
Yeah, okay. Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Milton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Palermo?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Harding?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Milton? Item seventy-four is approved, five to zero. Item seventy-five, an ordinance levying a special tax on assessment on certain lots, parts lots, and pieces of real estate in the City of Omaha to cover the cost of clearing snow and ice from sidewalks, script number twenty eighteen dash zero three.
The public hearing on item seventy-five begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-six, an ordinance vacating the portion of the North Sally Alleyway north of Shirley Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing on item number seventy-six begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-seven, an ordinance to accept the bid of solid surface care in annual amount of five thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars to enter into a three-year price agreement for carpet cleaning services at nine Omaha Police Department facilities.
Public hearing on item seventy-seven begins at this time. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item seventy-eight, Husker Tree and Landscaping appeals rejection of their bid from June nineteenth, 2019, for the City of Omaha Lot Clearing and Tree Removal Highlander Phase Two.
The public hearing on item seventy-eight will begin at this time. After the public hearing, there'll need to be a motion either to allow or deny the appeal. Are there any proponents to item seventy-eight? Those that are people in favor of allowing the appeal?
Spencer McGruder, fifteen twenty-four Cummings.
Welcome, Mr. McGruder.
Thank you.
If you could stay by the microphone.
Sorry.
Is there something on the, there they go.
No. What you have before you, and Mr. Palermo, I will try, I will attempt to satisfy your concerns that you expressed during your pre-council meeting.
Just so I'm clear, Mr. McGruder, are you Husker Tree and Landscaping or here on their behalf?
I'm here on their behalf.
Thank you.
Yeah, the first three documents are a series of bid tabulations, starting with the Long School Phase One project. It was bid, the bid opening was on April third. As you can see, Blademaster was the general contractor and they were the low bidder and identified Husker Tree as their participant, their tier-one ESB participant according to the SEB requirement. And under this particular bid, Husker Tree was participating at thirty-three percent.
The appeal's on Highlander, though, right?
Yeah, but I'm, I'm building that. And I, and I'm trying to give you a background for...
I'm kind of a stickler for sticking to the, to the specific topic.
Understood.
So let's stick to the specific topic.
The second item is Highlander Phase One. It's a continuation.
Different, different bid.
Okay, that's fine. On that one, they, they weren't, they weren't low. But the participation for Husker Tree was at twenty-five percent. Blademaster and Husker. On Highlander Phase Two, again, Husker Tree, I mean, Blademaster had listed Husker Tree as less than twenty percent ESB participation. That bid was submitted on June nineteenth, two thousand nineteen. Husker Tree submitted to Blademaster, transmitted its bid to Blademaster on the seventeenth of, of June, as you can see on your documents. And the next document is their actual bid. It was based on nineteen lots for fifty-seven thousand dollars, which is less than fifteen percent participation. The, the document after that was just the signature page. The, the following document is Husker Tree and Blademaster discussing what Blademaster felt was a problem on the Highlander project. And the reason why I'm bringing up Highlander is because when this occurred, this first conversation occurred on the nineteenth, June nineteenth, the same day as the bid, at noon, right after the bid was opened. The bid was open on, for Highlander Two at eleven o'clock on June nineteenth. That afternoon, at twelve o'clock, the owner of Blademaster told Mr. Reddick about some deficiencies that he wanted addressed. This document is showing that Mr. Reddick communicated with the owner of Blademaster and took action on his instruction.
That's on Highlander One?
This is on, again, again...
See, the appeal is Highlander Two, so we really gotta keep it just on Highlander Two.
Okay.
That's all we're considering.
All right. So, so here's Highlander Two.
Thank you.
Okay? On July second, twenty nineteen, Husker Tree appealed the rejection of its bid, okay? And on July third, there was a notice of award. Now, because the appeal was submitted prior to the notice of award, I would think that the, 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 or the notice of award would be stayed until the City Council had had a chance to...
It's not the way we do.
Okay, I understand.
Sorry.
No worries. All right. So with that, you have in your packet Exhibit A, which is the grounds for, to, to address items seventeen and eighteen of a question and answering for HUD, Section Three, okay?
Right.
And...
I guess the key, if we could, did they advertise for Section Three or...
Yes, they did. They did. They, they complied with the Section Three advertising requirement on the twenty-fourth of June, okay? They received their letter of rejection on the twenty-fifth of June. So prior to the...
When was the bid submitted?
The nineteenth of June.
So after they submitted the bid, they advertised?
Yes.
So at that point, when they submitted the bid, were they out of compliance?
They weren't out of compliance because the, the, the issue is they weren't found non, the bid wasn't found non-responsive, okay? They're saying they were out of compliance because they did not submit or they, they didn't send out all notices to everyone that was listed in their email.
So it's, it's your position on behalf of the bid appeal, the appellant, that since they were not told they were out of compliance, they would have been allowed additional time to advertise and they advertised before the rejection, therefore their bid was compliant?
Exactly.
That's your appeal.
That, that, that's my point.
All right, let's hear from the city. I'm gonna give you a chance to come back up.
Okay, thank you.
Edward Dantler, Omaha Planning Department.
Okay, what's the city's position?
Okay, so basically in our bid documents, we direct the contractors to advertise to the Section Three business interest before the bid is led. We have a sample notice that we have in the, in the bid documents that we, well, basically that we have all the bidders send to those Section Three business interests before the bid is led. Our guidance from HUD is that a written notice should be, should be sent to the prospective businesses before a bid opening.
They concede that wasn't done until after, but...
Yes, sir.
They, they say it was done before the rejection was made and they were not given that, not out of compliance notice, that, a notice that their bid was not compliant. I'm not aware of any ordinance that requires us to give that notice, but we can ask the city attorney that.
No.
I won't put you in that position.
Okay.
Is there anything else you'd like to say?
No, not right now.
Okay. Mr. Kratz? Is there a requirement that the city issue a notice that the bidder, that submits a bid, is that not in compliance with the bid specifications?
Paul Kratz, City Attorney, we do not need to send out a notice that non-compliance is determined at the time that the bids are submitted and opened.
Okay, before we bring Mr. McGruder back up, are there any other proponents or opponents who wish to be heard on this item? We'll need your name and address.
Hello, my name is Bonnie Kelly, address fifty-seven twenty North Fiftieth Street. And I have a question about the HUD regulations. I, I, my question is, who is required to notify the subcontractors to Section Three?
I think Ms. Ed just said from Planning Department that it's up to the bidder to provide the advertisement or notice to the, to the list, but that the city gave the list to the bidders.
So it's up to, so even if you're one hundred percent self-performance, you still have to notify subcontractors?
On this type of contract that has federal funds involved under the, forget the name of the grant, yes, that is correct.
Yeah, I, I was the director for the Omaha Housing Authority for the Procurement Contract Division and the Legal Division. And according to those HUD regulations, the responsibility was on the city to notify the subcontractors. I was, I was there fifteen years ago when we put that in process. So now you're telling me that the city has put that responsibility on the bidder to solicit the projects only, only if they are going to add subcontractors to the job?
I'll answer your question this way. If the city can come up and explain the grant and the grant requirements today as applicable to this, that's, that's what we can go by. So Ed, did you want to come up or someone else from HRR?
I, I've worked with Paul several times, you know, back in the years.
That's fine. Ed?
Edward Dantler, City Planning. We are a, a housing community development recipient. We're different from the public housing. We're different from the public housing. We have to do outreach as well as then reporting. We can, for our good, our greatest extent feasible, do what we have, have done. Basically, we do advertise already, but then we have the contractors basically reach out. They can then tell people how to connect with them and how then they can contract out, because that's, that's the difference there. We're not contracting directly with them on a subcontractor as well as a supplier.
Thank you. Mr. McGruder? Told I'd give you the last word.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that.
Did you wanna speak too? Okay. We'll, we'll call you up.
If you refer to Exhibit A in the question and answering on the Section Three items six, seventeen, and eighteen, it addresses it, it says prior to award. Doesn't say anything about prior to bidding, okay? It says prior to award, these notifications are, are, and, and they're, and using the list is not required by HUD, okay? So my point is, if the city.
But here's, here's the point. You concede the bid required the advertisement. You concede the bid specifications were not met in terms of, at the time the bid was delivered. Your position is it didn't have to be because of the award being made after the advertisement was made?
Well, there was no, there was no stipulation in the bid document, in the clauses, terms, and conditions, that said that was a prerequisite for submitting a responsive bid, which is how a contractor understands what's required to submit a responsive bid.
Okay, now that's a different argument. Ed? Did the bid specifications require advertising to the Section Three list, or did they not?
It does, and in our, in our notice, in our bid notice, it has a sample bid notice.
All right, thank you. We have one more opponent.
Good afternoon, my name's Larry Gertz at one four seven four eight North Hundred Thirty-Eighth Street in Omaha, six eight one four two. I'm one of the owners of Blade Masters Grounds Maintenance, the company that's intend to award to. I, I'm here to oppose the rejection of Husker's bid for numerous reasons. I mean, we've been contracting with the city of Omaha since, I think, two thousand two. We've completed probably well over a hundred and fifty projects for the city and done so faithfully. I've been on both sides of the fence, I know what Husker's is going through, but, you know, when you don't do your bid right, you don't do your bid right. And if the city starts making, you know, exceptions to their own rules, I think you're opening up a whole different can. You, you've been pretty strict with everything. There's exceptions with, I think when you, we've been in a position where an addendum wasn't acknowledged on a bid, we went and fought it, and there's exceptions to the rules on some things, some things there's not. And I think the city has been pretty clear on that. That's, that's, my point is, if, if there's rules and they're clear as day, there's also pre-bid meetings with the planning department, had the representatives. If it was the contractor's decision not to go to the pre-bid meeting, where all this, again, it was addressed in person to the potential contractors, that was that contractor's decision not to go to the pre-bid conference and get all the rules and regulations. I don't think that's a burden of the city of Omaha.
Thank you. Ma'am, you look like you were chomping at the bit to come on back up, so I don't wanna feel like, feel like you got cut off.
Yeah, I, I just have a, a question, well, statement. On the bid document, it used the term "you should," "you may," "we recommend." It never said.
Must or shall?
Must or shall.
Somebody have the bid.
In addition to that, it said, "You should make a bona fide effort to contact subcontractors." But subcontractors, from my experience, is only needed if you're gonna subcontract some work. If you look at Mr. Reddick's bid, he's a hundred percent self-performance. He did go far and beyond a bona fide effort to contact these subcontractors, but there's no work for them, because he's going to do a hundred percent of self-performance. So the terms in your bid documents is ambiguous. We read it as "you should," "according to the documents," "you may," or "if you want to." Nothing said "shall," "must," or "mandated." Now, if this was mandated, I went back and looked at the pre-bid notes from the pre-bid conference. There was nothing in the pre-bid conference that indicated that this was mandated, although you're gonna do a hundred percent self-performance. So the caveat here is the documents are not clear. It is clear to the reader, but what they interpret internally is different from the reader. If the document said "you should," "you may," "if you want to," "we suggest." And then you get rejected because you didn't do a must or, or shall, or a mandated. They switched the verbiage there when they rejected.
Well, the, I do find in the invitation to bid that the "should" language is with regard to the sample type of notice form that should be used. And using good faith to send it out is being required. But we're trying to pull up from the bid itself. Talia just did, from the city clerk. Oh my goodness gracious.
Because when we talked to Mr. Danzer, is that your name, sir? His concern was that we didn't send, or Mr. Reddick didn't send him an email. And. And that was the reason why the bid was gonna be rejected. And I'm saying, well, he's the author of this bid, so why would he need an email? Our suggestion was, he was saying that if you wanted to send me an email to let me know who you sent an email to, it was okay. But from the conversation that I had with him, he was gonna be rejected because he didn't get an email. So we're talking about using nine thousand dollars of HUD's federal money to award a contract to a different contractor because the bid documents were not clear. Mr. Reddick met and exceeded the federal requirements for contracting in the bid documents.
Okay, while the city's pulling up the language upon which it relies, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you.
President. Um, let, uh, let me, let me see if I can hopefully clear this up a little bit. Mr. Dantler?
Yes, sir.
In the bid document, are you saying that the, the necessity for, how did you, how did this bid document? Is this bid document part of a Section Three document, or is that what it is?
It has, what it has in it is Section Three information that's required. And I, I just gave a couple sheets, I'd like to show them here. Basically, this is, I don't know how to use this.
That's the second page.
Okay, so in that Section Three information, it talks about what the require, it actually just goes over what is Section Three, what's required, and so on.
Yeah, it just says that this is the, the notice sample that you should use. It doesn't say you're required to.
Well, it's part, it's, it's, it's also part of.
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry.
You said in the bid.
Yes, sir.
Said the, the requirement to advertise was in the bid. So where in the bid is that? That, that's what they're trying to, they want you to show them.
Okay.
Cause that. And that's the question I'm asking you.
This, I took, I took these sheets out.
Just, just show us where that language is at.
Well, I took out of the, the bid documents here.
Pull, pull up. Paul, let's put on the sheet where it says you shall advertise the Section Three list. This would be an addendum to say this is the form to use to advertise, or that we want you, or that you should use, and that you should use good faith efforts. But where in the bid does it say that's?
Okay.
See, here's the problem, Ed. What I'm, what I'm confused about is that, and, and, and Ms. Kelly will tell you, the Section Three elements for HUD, that the Section Three portion of that was rewritten several years ago by myself and some other people. So I understand what Section Three is, I'm, what I don't understand is how you're applying it here.
Okay. So, so what we're required to do is show proof that it is being done.
Yes.
And so when I, when, it's in, it's in the bid document, it starts out with Section Three clause in the bid document.
All I was asking. All he wants to know is where. Just put it on the blow-up, Ed, have him blow up the language, not the addendum for what the form is to advertise.
No, this isn't the addendum, this is part of it.
Where in the bid is that?
It's in, it's, it starts out in Section Three clause.
I think we have a communication barrier. Put clause three up on the, the Elmo. Not the, not the two pages, but where in that bid document it refers to that?
The two pages are part of it. It's not just two pages.
I think. No, there should be a bid document that states where the, what, what, what the requirements are. That's what the document should state.
Well, that's what.
Yeah, that's what it should state.
Start out with Section Three clause, then we have procedures for implementing Section Three.
Yeah, but where is Section Three clause?
And then, and what's that?
I understand what that is. I, I wanna know what, what the president is asking you, what I'm asking you is, in your bid document, where does it specify what the requirements are and who's required to meet those qualifications?
And I'm trying to answer that, basically, for us, we put in the information about Section Three. And then we put in what we need from them, and that's, that is part, this is part of that.
Where?
These, these two documents here.
No, that doesn't tell us where, it doesn't tell us specifically what the bidder is required to do. Where does it say that specifically in the bid document?
This is what we, this is what we've had, and we've always showed the HUD auditors that we've had. We give them what it always, what's required.
But Ed, Ed, let me interrupt you. What the argument of the appellant is, is that there, there was nothing in the bid that stated in plain and simple English language that the contractor that was submitting the bid was required to advertise to the Section Three list, that it was a "shall." What, what you've produced in Section Three is saying "should." So what we're saying is, look back to the larger document. Where does it say it's up to the contractor to do it? And if it's, if it's beyond your legal realm, and you want the city attorney who you worked with on this to come down and articulate that, that's fair. That sometimes that's what departments do. But at this point, what you've, what you've put up on the screen so far isn't helping me. Mr. Espinoza?
Thank you.
Name and address, department.
Christian Espinoza, Human Rights and Relations Department. As a part of the bid document, I wanna put it here, is the procedures and for implementation of Section Three for the city. And the first point is clear that the city of Omaha and Section Three recipients, applicants, and such have the responsibility for implementing Part One Thirty-Five in Section Three. And the steps and procedures that detail everything in Section Three. And one of those ones is the advertisement of the project. So in the bid document, page thirty-seven, you can find all these procedures and regulations.
Can you read that, that paragraph from page thirty-seven, sliding to the paragraph number?
Number, sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
The city of Omaha is a Section Three recipient.
What paragraph are you in?
In the first, top, number one.
Okay.
Can you see it?
Yes, thank you.
The city of Omaha is a Section Three recipient, applicant, and such. Has responsibility for implementing Part One Thirty-Five, Section Three. It does this by implementing the steps, procedures, and procedures detailed below. Two, when the city enters into agreement with subrecipients for an amount exceeding the two hundred thousand dollars, that is the case of this project, or contracting for an amount exceeding the one hundred, and when the subrecipients' contracts are sent into the agreement with contracts and subcontracts for the amount exceeding the one hundred thousand dollars, then the following is required.
Right, so that's talking about what the city.
The city.
Now let's get to the contractor.
Okay. In section, number three, C.
So here's Section B and two B, what's it say about the subrecipients slash contractors?
It said that we provide to the greatest extent feasible training and hiring of Section Three residents and contract with Section Three businesses.
That's not what I.
To B, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah, what's that say?
It says, "Subrecipient contract."
Two B, two B. All I see is two C. Yeah.
Is that one?
Yes.
Am I in the right one?
Yes.
Okay. Subrecipients' contractors must ensure, to the greatest extent feasible, that awarded contracts go to contractors, subcontractors, that will provide, again, to the greatest extent feasible, training and hiring of Section Three residents and contracts with Section Three businesses.
Okay, continue. Where does it say that they have to advertise to them? It says they have to, to use them to the greatest extent feasible?
Three A D, yeah, it's a good one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Continue.
Yeah, okay. Three A, each recipient, subrecipient has a responsibility to comply with Section Three in its own operations.
Well, I can't, I can't see that. Well, you're on, you're on three D now.
In my screen, I'm in three A.
Well, we can't see that. So you look on the screen. You can see what we can see, it's a portion of it, there you go.
Can you, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. Three, so we're in three right here.
Okay.
Each recipient, subrecipient has a responsibility to comply with Section Three in its own operations and ensure compliance in the operations of its contracts and subcontracts. That involves, can you see?
No, you scrolled too far, there you go.
There you go, okay. A, implementing procedures designed to notify Section Three residents of training and employment opportunities and Section Three businesses concerned or contracted opportunities.
There you go.
Okay.
So the B is no, notifying the potential.
Notifying potential, yeah, and I was going there when you requested me to, with number two.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. There, it appears.
Who?
Says each, number three, it says each recipient, subrecipient, that's the contract.
Okay.
They have the responsibility to comply, and then the, the, that involves A, implementing, B, notifying. So there's the, the requirement to give the notice.
Section Three, submission B. Should, should I read it out loud?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Notifying potential. Notifying potential contractors or requirements of Section 3, and including Section 3 clause in all solicitations and contracts. Can I get your advertisement? That is exactly what Ed was showing you guys, what it has to be.
Can you scroll down just a little bit where you're, where you're starting to read at?
Yeah, that's B.
Go down.
In there?
Down more. Where you starting to read, where you starting to read from? 3B.
3B.
So start with, start with 3, read 3, and then skip to B.
Okay. Each recipient, subrecipient, has a responsibility to comply with Section 3 in its own operations, and ensure compliance in the operation of each contractor and subcontractors. This involves, and I want to jump into B, okay? Notifying potential contractors or requirements of Section 3, and including Section 3 clause in all solicitations and contracts.
Well, to me, that's it. But anything else you'd like to say?
No, I'm just here to ask a question.
Mr. Weeson, are you the, are you the lawyer for this? Mr. Weeson, city attorney's office.
Ryan Weeson, Assistant City Attorney. I'm here to answer questions on the bid process and how...
Did what, what was just read provide, in the city attorney's office's mind, the direction to the people and the entities that were going to submit bids, that they were required as a part of that to advertise the notice of Section 3 to the Section 3 list?
Based upon my limited review, that seems to be sufficient, but I'm not going to pretend to be an expert on HUD, the federal regulations either.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Gray, were you finished, or did you have more? You had the...
I've got concerns with the way we're interpreting this language, because I'm not sure this language is correct. I don't think we're interpreting this right.
All right, we can come back to you if you've got more. Ms. Melton.
My question is, is Husker Tree on the list as a Section 3 company? Who can answer that?
Mr. Ed, do you know the answer right off the top of your head, or do we need Husker to come and tell us that?
He is as of the 20th, or after the bid, as of the 22nd.
So he qualified as a Section 3 after the bid date?
Yeah. According to what we use, we use the registry.
Okay.
Well, maybe I'll ask his attorney, Mr. Magruder, or...
I don't think, Mr. Magruder, you're not a lawyer, right? You're a friend, you're in for the supporter.
May I clarify one thing really fast?
Yes. State your name and address.
Christian Espinoza from the Human Rights and Relations Department. For the purpose of this bid, what we was required is to be 100% a small and emerging business. That is the program, that's the reason I'm here. That was a requirement. The second part is to be advertised to Section 3 companies. It was not required to be a Section 3 company to bid for this particular project.
Right, but I could, so, but if you, if you are a Section 3 company, then it would seem to me that you wouldn't have to advertise. If you actually were a Section 3 company, then you've already fulfilled the, then you've fulfilled the requirement in and of itself. Is that right?
The first requirement is to be a small and emerging business registered with the city.
Okay.
That's the first requirement. The second requirement is to advertise to Section 3, regardless of you are Section 3 or not.
So you have to advertise for subs, even if you're not going to use subs and you are a Section 3?
Because it's part of the grant, that we, that we have to make sure that everybody's informed about this particular project.
Okay, thank you. That clarified some things for me.
Yeah.
I guess.
Wish we had heard that about 20 minutes ago. Other council members wishing to be heard? If not, is there a motion? Again, the form of the motion is either to allow or deny the appeal. And if allowed, to direct the department to act accordingly. Mr. Gray.
President, at this point, I don't know that I can make a motion, because I'm not convinced that we're reading that correctly. Because when you talk about the recipient or subrecipient, are you talking about the recipient and the subrecipient of the grant, or the, of the individuals that receive the grant, being the city?
Yeah, I guess I have the benefit of working in the legal world, where I know that the contractors are called sub-receipients.
They're sub-receipients.
But in a paragraph right above it, it referred to the subrecipient and contractors as interchangeable.
The same, okay.
That was in paragraph two.
Okay. I'm not sure we're, based on the way Section 3 was written, and I was there, but I don't, I don't believe that it's being interpreted correctly, but I can't make a motion, nor can I vote up or down on this, quite frankly, because I don't think we're using the language right. That's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Well, is there anyone else who wishes to make a motion? Or in the parlance of winter driving, we are stuck on this high center. The wheels are spinning. The public hearing's closed. You got to wait, see if a council member wants to call you up.
Thank you very much. My name is Kevin Reddick. I'm the owner of Husker Tree and Landscape, and I live at 5417 North 50th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104. Okay? In reference, oh, excuse me, do you have any questions and answers?
In a nutshell, will you just give us exactly what happened, what you read, and who you are, and SEB, Section 3, just in a nutshell, because then we're getting on at 5 o'clock, and the public hearing's closed.
I understand.
So summarize it all up for us.
I'll do the best that I can, ma'am.
Okay.
I promise you that. From the inception of Husker Tree and Landscaping, I've been a Section 3 business from the beginning in North Omaha. Mr. Gray can attest to that. Was I registered at that time when I first started? I didn't know about it. But when I did, I took action. In reference to this particular bid documentation, in the terms and the conditions section of the bid, it did not say that I had to, I shall, or, you know, that I had to solicit everybody. I did make a good faith effort, because I did send emails out. Okay? And then...
But I don't mean to interrupt you, but did you provide that in your bid document?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay, there were some emails that were, that did not all get sent out, but we did send them out prior to June the 25th, when the planning director wrote up the denial for non-compliance. I got in contact with Tommy Warren of the Urban League. I called and spoke with him personally, reached out to him in reference to people that he may recommend, Husker Tree and Landscape, and to hire Sal at Omaha Housing Authority.
I know, but, but none of that matters. Well, we have to vote, and this is what I want to let you know, this isn't, this isn't personal. We have bid documents, and we've had to deny appeals for people that I think I really didn't want to. They made just a simple mistake, but we have to have set rules. And here, we could lose grant funding if we do it wrong. So it may be that this isn't clear, and maybe it needs to be more clear, but I think what our planning department is saying, that if we don't uphold these rules, so to speak, or these terms as required, then we could lose our federal funding. So maybe it's going to have to be that...
You would ask the city attorney that. He'd probably confirm that for you.
Okay. Mr. Kratz?
Paul Kratz, city attorney. That is correct. And again, I don't know the HED rules specifically, but we certainly could lose the funding on this particular project, and it may impact future projects also.
And that's, because this is the Choice Neighborhood Grant, and it comes with specific requirements. So as much as, maybe I don't like the language that we used, and that's what I, Mr. Reddick, that's what I just want you to be sure of. I think that maybe we need to look at how our bids are written, and maybe the directions that we're using. But in this case, if we, if, if we allow a bidder to violate the rules that were set out by the federal grant program, we run the risk of losing future federal funding. So, Mr. Reddick, I just want you to be aware of that. I really feel for your position, but I think it...
I understand, but there's an exhibit that I'm trying to locate here. The one with the...
Here what?
It, that's what Paul's...
Because I did, I did make a good faith effort, you know, and that's, and that's all that the bid information requested, is to make a good faith effort.
Well, Mr. Reddick, we've been, we've had the argument, so we're getting circular at this point.
Right.
So Ms. Melton, did you have anything else?
Uh, no.
Before I call Mr. Harding? All right, Mr. Harding. Bill, can you?
Okay, can I just read one thing?
No, sir. I've asked, I've asked for someone else to give me the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, okay.
Yes, sir. Bill DeCasse, City Planning Department.
Yeah, you were going to weigh in on...
Well, I just wanted to clarify, this is not Choice Neighborhood Funds, this is Community Development Block Grant Funds.
But regardless of that, I think, would you agree with what Mr. Kratz just said as it related to...
For the project, definitely, yeah. If we weren't in compliance, there would be a problem.
Okay. So there's no risk, in terms of compliance, with denying the appeal. There is risk of being out of compliance if we grant the appeal. And Mr. Weeson has said that he believes that the language that Mr. Espinoza said required the notice. Although I would agree with Ms. Melton, we can do better to make that airtight. I think we kind of, we're stuck on this and what we can do without risk.
I'll make a motion to deny the appeal.
Second, roll call.
Melton. Paul. Palermo. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to one. Non-action...
Sorry, your bid appeal's been denied.
Non-action items, item 79 through 107 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Melton. Paul. Palermo. Gray. Harding. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed six to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:01.